Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government.
How do I turn this off?
Testing, testing, testing. I appreciate the patience as we figure out the hybrid model. I'm sure we'll have a lot more of these problems, but appreciate everyone's patience along the way. Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District. Councilman Cohen of the 1st District is attending virtually. Councilman Costello of the 11th District. Councilwoman Porter of the 10th District and Councilwoman Ramos of the 14th District. Thank you. Representing the Office of the President, I see Preston Lewis in the back. Thank you, Preston. And representing the Mayor's Office, I see Natasha in the background. Thank you. And I see Matt Stageman also representing the Office of the President. This afternoon, the Committee will have a work session for Bill LO-21-0006, Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan, for the purpose of the Committee holding a hearing quarterly to review crime statistics for the Police Department and to monitor the progress of the biennial Violence Prevention Plan. This bill was introduced on March 8, 2021, and was sponsored by myself. And just, we do this regularly, and I just want to sort of set the groundwork for how we want to run the meeting. I want to give the Commissioner and the Director both 30 minutes to present. And then we'll open the floor to questions after that. We're going to start with the Commissioner, open to questions, and then go to the Director, open to questions. I've had a number of personal conversations with the Director and the Commissioner on how we want to do this going forward. We intend to hold more frequent meetings so we can dig into particular issues, but this will be our last one with the traditional setup just going forward. So with that, I will hand it over to the Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Committee, members of the Council. I won't be long before you. We have a large number of our people here from all four bureaus. All four deputy commissioners are here, both colonels, Chief of Patrol, Chief of Investigations are here, my Governmental Affairs, members of the Compliance Team, the Administrative Bureau, and the Public Integrity Bureau are all here to help answer questions and present and help answer any questions any of you may have. But before I turn it over to Deputy Briscoe for the first part of the presentation, let me just give you a personal thank you because last week, as you know, we had an injured officer that occupied much of our time that got injured. And with your grace, you were willing to move the hearing from last week to this week, and so we all appreciate that. I have been to see him this week, is doing, sitting up with his wife, doing well, talking, and was very grateful that I was able to go see him. So he's doing well, and I just wanted to express my thanks to you for the consideration of moving the hearing to the day so we can accommodate what was happening last week. All right, Deputy Briscoe.
Good afternoon, Council Chair. We're going to start. Thank you so much, Michelle, for moving the slides. Our clearance rates year-to-date, we're at 38.6% for homicide. The national average is 55.7%. And for non-fatal shootings, we're at 23.1% against a national average of 26.1%. For robberies, we're at 18.7% against a national average of 23.1%. And for burglaries, we're at 99.63% against 9.6%. Next slide. And year-to-date, we've arrested 58 homicide suspects. Of that 58, 45 were arrested with prior charges, and 24 of them were repeat violent offenders. 13 of them had no prior record. For non-fatal shooting arrests, year-to-date, we've arrested 60 individuals for non-fatal shootings. Of that 60, 39 had prior arrests. 21 of them were repeat violent offenders, and 21 of them had no prior record. For our gun-related arrests, this year, we have arrested 772 individuals for gun arrests. That's up 4% from last year against 739. Of that, patrol made the lion's share of those arrests with 670. And again, that's up from last year for 646, that's 3.72. And the non-patrol units made 71 arrests, down just over 5%. And before you, sir, are the crime makeups. Can you hear me? This background noise, I want to make sure you can hear me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. The citywide crime overview is, you can see the categories broken by month over year as to where we are with the crimes of homicides, shooting, rape, carjacking, commercial robbery, street robbery, residential robbery, aggravated assaults, arson, auto theft, burglary, and larceny from auto. Our district homicide comparison this year over the last, from 17 to 22, for the Central District, Eastern District, Northeast District, Northern District, Northwest District, Southeast District, Southern, Southwest, and Western. District shooting comparison for the Central, Eastern, Northeast, Northern, Northwest, Southeast, Southern, Southwest, and Western from the year 17 to 2022. And before you is our domestic and youth violence, and these are a subset of the larger number in terms of who was involved in domestic violence crimes year-over-year for the varying Part 1 crimes. UCR Part 1 crimes. And that's for homicide. This year of our domestics have been eight. Domestic cases against 13 from last year. There have been no non-fatal shootings for this year that were domestic connected, domestic related, rather, by legal prescription, by legal definition. 21 against last year of rape, carjacking, robbery commercial, robbery street, robbery residential, aggravated assault, arson, auto theft, burglary, larceny, and then larceny from auto. At the bottom, there's the youth violence year-over-year, and these are victims of, youth that have been victims of violence for the crime types as prescribed for homicide, shooting, rape, carjacking, robbery commercial, robbery street, robbery residential, aggravated assault, arson, auto theft, burglary, larceny, and larceny from auto. And here, we just wanted to provide an update on our short-term strategy. We know in June, we announced our short-term deployment strategy as we dug in a little deeper in a previous meeting conversation. Just wanted to provide an update. Total warrants served this year against last for our team, 1,385 total warrants served against 1,005, that's 380 additional warrants. Overall, of that subset, there's a felony warrant. We've served 660 felony warrants this year against 586 from last year, up 74 warrants. And for misdemeanor, we've served 725 warrants this year against 419 from last, and that's up 306 warrants.
Good afternoon, Eric Lawson, Chief of Staff. For the updates on the five-year plan, we continue to make progress updates as we go forward. We gave a full briefing to this council committee back in March on where we were holistically. These are some of the updates from that point over the last three months or so that we've made additional milestone achievements. And so in this format going forward, we want to make sure we continue to provide those continuous updates as we progress through the year. Among them, management training, a big piece that we know is part of the Commissioner's overall transformation plan. We received a week-long training for about 20 or so of our members at lieutenant, captain, and major ranks to have an intensive, dedicated training. These are folks that are coming in, they're doing this work, their phones are off, they're completely focused on this training to make sure that they're given, you know, those lessons. We want to make sure that's embedded into their, into their work development, their professional development. We're also sending nine members to the Senior Management Institute for Police, again, at the lieutenant, captain, and major ranks. That's a three-week-long program up in Boston. And so again, those are continuous milestones that we're achieving under management training. IT projects, and we have our CTO here and the Deputy Commissioner of Compliance, if there are more details needed on these. But our data warehouse procurement has been completed. This is a huge piece of the puzzle for us in making sure we're modernizing how our data is organized and stored, getting out of some of our historical systems that have been longstanding problems. Configuration for that is ongoing, but we were able to get through the procurement process for that. EIS, that's Early Intervention System. We've developed a draft Statement of Work section for the RFP. That's, again, a big piece of the puzzle, defining what that system will do for us. That's necessary for us to begin to proceed with the procurement process and getting that early intervention system up and running. Now that we have our records management system, that's the foundational, one of the foundational systems needed to be able to deploy the EIS. That's the next phase of our technology implementation. For consent decree, for training, we have ongoing two-day in-service training for our Youth Interactions Module. Again, these are milestones that we're achieving through the annual monitoring plan. So we're on track with that. We have our use-of-force policies. This is, again, part of that cycle of policy updates that are out for review by the public feedback. That will be available later this summer for the public to provide feedback on our use-of-force policies. Smart policing, as the Mayor's Initiative, to ensure that we're diverting as many calls to TRU that are TRU-eligible. The Telephone Reporting Unit is starting to take that volume now. It's a little early to tell you where we are with stats and data, but we figure by the next council hearing, we'll be able to provide kind of a statistical update on where we are with that. And then finally, a note for civilianizations. We talked about the 35 civilian investigator positions that were authorized by the council in the FY '23 budget. We're happy to report that we've received over 775 applications for those 35 positions, showing a great deal of interest in joining the department as these civilian investigator positions. We're pouring through all of that now. The Admin Bureau is looking at a process to ensure that we are, you know, sorting through those applications. Once selected, they will go through a training process at our Training Academy for a month to make sure that they are fully up to speed on the department's policies, training and investigative techniques, at which point they'll then be deployed to various units throughout the agency as we described in our budget presentation. So those are some of the updates on the five-year plan. And I would defer back to the Police Commissioner for any further updates on our presentation. And then Commissioner, if you have any updates that you want to provide.
No more updates. At this time, we're available for questions if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, and appreciate the quick run-through and the good use of time. I was just kind of combing through the stats, and a couple of things really jumped out to me. First is commercial robberies. We've seen that go up significantly, more than double where we were last year. And I know we didn't have a great year last year either. What's going on there? Why are we seeing that uptick so significantly? And I think to pair that metric, so we're looking at 484 commercial robberies in 2022 and 234 in 2021 for a 106% increase year-over-year. And to sort of connect that to the clearance rates, we're seeing that clearance rate dip in this very same year. Can you tell me a little what's going on? The clearance rate right now is 18.7%.
I'll enter the first part, and then I'll allow anybody on the operations team to jump in. What we're seeing is in, part of the increase is related to when the clerk or the cashier or an employee in an establishment confronts the person who is just stealing. For example, somebody stealing a pack of cigarettes or stealing candy. Once the employee confronts them, that crime is converted from shoplifting to commercial robbery. And so many, many times, and we go over this every single Monday, the Deputy and I, many times, we have quite a few of those commercial robberies that were just simply shopliftings. Some of them are true commercial robberies, where they go in, they demand money. But then sometimes they're stealing products, and on the way out the door, they're confronted by an employee. That crime is then converted. I would say somewhere about half of them in recent months have been converted to commercial robbery simply because they were assaulted by the perpetrator stealing something or the employee confronted them in the commission of the crime.
So do we, oh, please, Deputy.
Just to kind of underscore the Commissioner's point, thank you, sir. So what we're seeing in terms of a recent trend, to the Commissioner's point, is, you know, when we look at 2021, though businesses started to open and reopen in the world of COVID, coming out of that, more businesses are open, they're open later, they're open longer. And what we're seeing is a lot of store clerks and personnel trying to intervene in thefts. In that process, that now, that once they're assaulted, as the Commissioner just stated, that crime changes. It is not just the theft, it is now a commercial robbery. And we're seeing that in our convenience stores. We've also seen a few patterns of people showing up that we've made, in some patterns, some arrests in, and literally going through and trying to take advantage of particular types of stores. So it was not just by day or by time, it was different, specific businesses, business types. And so in that case, we did make an arrest, and I think it was about seven cases or seven to 10 cases that that particular pattern, just as a underscore to the point, that we're seeing some of that happen. And with that volume, that changes the ability to turn a case around and close it quickly. So with the onslaught of cases, it shifts our ability to close faster because the detectives are taking in more cases, which affects initially our clearance rate. So there's a lot more process that goes into being able to close those cases is the need for additional evidence, witnesses, whether that's video evidence, physical evidence. So with the onslaught of cases, it does, our clearance rate is immediately impacted.
So just to further clarify, from my understanding, we are seeing more, are we seeing more people intervene? Or are we just now calculating those interventions as robberies, whereas in the past, we did not?
Both, both. We are seeing more robberies, but we are seeing more employees attempting to intervene. And I would add, the third part, sometimes the large number of them are simple attempts where nothing was taken, but it still classifies as a commercial robbery. And so not all of them are successful, but even the attempts are categorized as a commercial robbery and counted in that number.
Thank you. My next question, so the four tenants of any performance management regimen or stat system are timely and accurate information shared by all. Rapid deployment of resources, effective tactics and strategies, and relentless follow-up and assessment. Are these four tenants currently being applied to the department's CompStat 360 program? And if so, can you explain your process? If not, can you explain why not?
So as you know, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, you've had the opportunity to view what we're doing and while we're doing it. So the CompStat 360 with equity, the basis of the CompStat model are the four tenements that you articulated. How we evaluate them looks differently than they looked before. They're a part of it. Our larger strategy, when we're looking at CompStat 360 with equity, is just to make sure that there's an analysis of are we where we are supposed to be? How long does it take us to get where we're supposed to be? Once we arrive there, are we focused on the right people and the right elements of community and the right issues? So the model, though it supports those four tenements, it's just a bit more robust than it's previously been because it's with equity that we're including more partners. Because previously, we used to look at CompStat as what are the police doing as if the strategy in and of itself, we could complete that in and of ourselves. We can't. We need support from others. So while we're holding ourselves accountable to the model of timely intelligence, accurate deployment, relentless follow-up, we're also asking some of the deeper questions. How are we achieving these goals, and who are we working with to achieve the goals? And I welcome the Chief of Patrol or Chief of Detectives to jump in.
As the DC alluded to, no, she's right. So we're looking through not only the proactive engagement, but also in the DAT and microzones. We're looking always at the tenants of Foot Patrol, Director Patrol, Business Checks, Warrant Service, Community Meetings to get everyone involved in reference to this district-wide approach and engagement in reference to this proactive engagement, following up on homicides and non-fatal shootings as we look at not only ourselves, but how do our partners play in this? And also in reference to setting the goals of smart, smart metrics for these districts. So when they assign these specific areas, how are they going to achieve it? And are they routinely looking at, are they on step to reach their target? What are the obstacles in that we work through this? Not only through our CompStat every Thursday, but every Monday and Friday in our crime control meetings.
And then, sir, I just wanted to go back to the commercial robbery question that you had.
Sure.
Took me a second to find the stats, but our commercial robbery clearance, the clearance you have there is for total robberies. Our commercial robbery clearance is 31%. And if you add in the open warrants, that goes to almost to 40%. And that goes back to what the Commissioner had said about the shoplifting's gone bad because we usually can identify those suspects relatively quickly. And we've closed some really good patterns. We had an individual hit us with about 12 stores in the southeast that we closed. We had, we had an individual hit us with eight commercial businesses in Marl Park, and Patrol actually did a phenomenal job with the flyers that everybody put out. They went right to where we knew he was going to be, and he was there, and we ended up making the arrest. So they're doing excellent work, but the clearance rate with the warrant is almost 40% in commercial robberies.
Got it. So just to clarify, so my initial read of the first chart on robberies, it does not include commercial robberies?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The initial read of the chart, the very first chart?
No, that's for, that's total robberies. That's every robbery.
But if we're looking at commercial robberies?
I have a breakdown of the commercials and the carjackings through citywide robbery. That's why we break it out to keep track of that.
That's helpful. If you could share that independently, that'd be helpful. Thank you. I'm going to open the floor to questions from the Committee. We're going to start on this side.
If I can add one more thing before we go about the CompStat process?
Yes.
In addition to those four tenants, it really is the question I ask, and I'm sure my other deputy commissioners are asking, the question of how do you know? So when commanders are reporting out and when we follow up, the question is always, how do you know? And so traditionally, what would happen is they would say, well, my lieutenant, I told my lieutenant to do it. My lieutenant told me he did it. That doesn't answer the question of how do you know? We want commanders actually, because we follow up with them, we want them following up to go ask questions all the way at the worker level to ensure that what was instructions and directives that were given from the executive level, make it all the way down. And then they can come back and say, I know because I saw it for myself. I saw the officer performing this task. And I can assure you that it's, the directive was given, it was carried out and executed, not just because somebody in the supervisory chain told me, but we verified for ourselves. And so they are held to that expectation when it comes to follow-up.
And I think someone already answered this question without me asking it, but how often do we hold the CompStat meetings? And who's typically in attendance for those meetings? At what level do we?
So the CompStat meetings are held every Thursday. In attendance are, all four of the bureaus are represented because it's an entire agency accountability session. The district commanders are present in the room along with other high-level command members from the other bureaus. So it is a total sum evaluation of performance for the executive. And when we're looking at the structure, it is, number one, to prevent, interrupt, and solve crime for CompStat model, the template. Integrate community and governmental partners, maximize organizational efficiency, and incorporate equity. So in the evaluation of your performance, it isn't just the four tenements, as I stated, it is to answer some of those questions as well.
And just as a follow-up to that, what, what performance metrics are put in place to measure the effectiveness of command staff to ensure that they are properly managing their units, their districts, and divisions, and bureaus, and otherwise?
I could not hear your last part, I'm sorry.
The question was, what performance metrics are put into place to measure the effectiveness of command staff to ensure that they are properly managing their units, their districts, their divisions, and bureaus?
So of course, there's always the evaluation of how they're doing in terms of the crime. But because we don't control the attributes of how crime occurs, we're looking deeper beyond the number. So we're looking at how they're spending their budgets, we're looking at their staffing, if they're managing their resources appropriately, we're looking at if they're managing their fleet appropriately, we're looking at their response time for calls for service, we're looking at their feedback loop from community engagement, we're looking at their proactivity, we're looking to balance whether or not they're responding appropriately to any of the concerns that come in. So there are a century of KPIs, if you will, that we're looking at week over week in our CompStat evaluation.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. I'm going to start on this side for questions from the Committee. We'll start with Councilman Porter. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So I had a quick question, how you know, I had a quick question related to, during the budget hearings, we talked about business checks within each of the businesses. Do you have an estimate how successful those business checks are currently and were previously over the past six months? The reason why I ask that question is that many store owners are afraid, you know, they're afraid of approaching these individuals. And so if they're regular business checks, I'm wondering what engagement strategies you all are implementing so that store owners and business owners can feel comfortable if officers are routinely kind of going into those establishments?
So routinely, I think it comes down to officers in the districts as well as their NCOs that utilize robustly to the DAT units and DDUs with touching these businesses, be they problematic or not. I think to the success of business checks, we're pushing the metrics of being a good partner. So things as far as target hardening for the business in reference to their facade, in reference to lighting, in reference to being in compliance with having only 20% of your storefront occupied with signage so that the officers can see into a business. But also the small intangibles of doing, when you do a business check, does that business have a business logbook and where that business logbook is located? If it's located in the very front of the book, then it's doing you a disservice because all the officer does is stick a leg in, sign the book, and go back out, potentially. But if it's in the rear of the book, if it's somewhere else that forces the officers to go inside and actually walk up and down the aisles and deal differently, I think that's when we get the most bang for the buck. So that's how we're getting down into the weeds of how to do a successful business check, not only at the patrol district level, but also with NCOs and DAT team members.
I'm sorry, ma'am. If I may add to that, the whole goal of it is for engagement's sake. It is not just to, that's a byproduct, to check the business. It's really to create opportunities and synergies for the patrol officers and district detectives to get out and engage. Business checks is just one of the means by which we measure that. And there are other, Foot Patrol, Bike Patrol, Community Meetings. The goal of it is really to engage our community members to find out any issues, concerns, and to relationship build.
No, I thank you for that. And the reason why I'm asking that question, because the Chair had asked about the increase in commercial robberies. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a formal request on three intersections in District 10 related to business checks. New City Mart, 1100 Block of Washington Boulevard. We also have Pizza Mart at the cross-section of Washington Boulevard and Cross Street. And then down in Brooklyn, the 500 Block of Patapsco. And my clear question is, how many business checks have been done to date? And what were some of the outcomes of those business checks? Yes, sir.
Got it, thank you. Do we know how long it would take to get that information, just to get it on a timeline?
We should be able to have that to you by the end of the week. That shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
If Friday call a business would be.
Okay, that works perfectly. And Mr., oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was trying to write down the addresses and names really quickly, but can you just make sure?
Sure. It's a New City Mart at the corner of Washington Boulevard and Austin. Then we have Pizza Mart, which I believe is at the cross-section of Washington and Cross. And then the third one is the 500 Block of Patapsco down in Brooklyn.
Any particular business there, just the block?
No, it is the business there is New City Mart, Pizza Mart. And then the one on 500 Block of Patapsco, it is a pharmacy there and a daycare. So just in that general vicinity.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And then my second question has to deal with the overlay of the microzone approach with this commercial, like with the influx in commercial. this commercial, like with the influx in commercial burglary. One of the, and Commissioner Harrison, one of the criticisms that I made during the budget hearing is really understanding, um, the microzone approach and the effectiveness and the success of the microzone approach. And I'm wondering how businesses, particularly our small businesses, kind of flow into that approach.
So, thank you for that. The microzone, the microzone strategy, which can be called a number of different things depending on where you are in the country, it's, it was based off of violent crime, three violent crime indicators of homicides, non-fatal shootings, and armed robberies, to include carjackings in an area over a five-year period. And when we looked at areas that had that, there were a number of areas across the city that made up 33% of all of the violent crime. There were, so things like, um, armed robberies and commercial robberies are part of those robberies. Other crimes that may be occurring, shopliftings and thefts from those stores weren't part of the calculus of how we designed the microzone. It was really, um, armed robberies to include carjacking, shootings and murders. Um, so when we put officers in the microzones, it's really about not just being there, but what you're doing when you're there. We want them to go there three times during the shift, but it's really only about 15, 20 minutes at a time to go there, get out, conduct business checks, engage the community members, handle your foot patrols. And then you can go back to your post and answer other calls, but it's really about the dosage. How many times during your shift do we want you to do it? And different officers can do it in the same zone and they can, they can also go to other microzones. But it really is about, here is the place where we know historically violent crime has existed over a sustained period of time. The metric was five years. And now here's what, now we know where to go. Here's what we want you to do when you get there. We think it has a deterrent effect for some property crime when we are doing that. What we've seen is that some of the violent crime went down, but it did have some deterrent effect with some of the other property crime, but not, but not all.
No, I appreciate that. And so the reason why I bring that up is because the three intersections that, that I've just named were the result of having like major violent crimes at those intersections and a business is right at those intersections. And so I'm wondering if the three businesses that are named are within the microzone approach, if by your premise, if violent crime is occurring at that activity, then that business should be within the microzone approach. And so it goes back to like community engagement strategies within those respective businesses because they invariably are the intersection of that microzone approach and the commercial, I mean, the uptick of commercial burglaries that you're mentioning.
I would say the, that's a great point you're making. I would say the original, in the original design, it was the conversation about the crimes and the number of crimes, not always the businesses that could have been contributing to the crimes. However, however, they're, they are a part of that because some of the businesses are, they're not facilitating the crime, but they're certainly inhibiting it. And we have to always make sure that we're addressing that, just like we're addressing what the officers are doing, conducting those business checks, hardening those businesses, or to some degree, if the business is complicit, working to shut the business down.
Yeah. And so, Mr. Chair, I'd ask another question related to that. What's the evaluation process related to padlocking a commercial business given the uptick of violence in that, in the particular intersection?
So the processes normally, they have several incidents of crimes of violence, acts of violence within a year period. What we do is, you know, businesses for Baltimore and the thriveability of Baltimore is important. We just don't want to shut anybody's business down.
Sure.
Um, because we know that that is the driving point for all of us in this city. So what we do is we look for to have a, um, a progressive approach. So we'll have the NCOs and the district commanders reach out to the businesses themselves. If they're not a good partner at that time, what we'll do is working with legal for the city, we'll call in that business and have an additional meeting in my office where we'll set some kind of parameters of what the business can do to be a good partner. If at that time, through that assessment period, be it three, two, three, six months, whatever we decide upon is a good time to do that. If at that time, they still continue to be not a good partner, still have incidents, at that time, we can make a recommendation to the PC's office in reference to a padlock.
I thank you for that, Mr. Chair. I'd like to add another formal request for data on the green apple located in Marl Park. I'd like specifically to know the following data points. Um, how many police, how many police calls have been there? Um, the number of violent incidences that were there? And then lastly, if there's been any, if there's been any type of conversation related to padlocking that particular business? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Just wanna verify, you said the green apple?
Yes, it is the green. I'm gonna text you the address, but it's the green apple. Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Costello?
Thank you. Um, so we're currently in year three of a crime strategy that the administration in this police department put in place. And each year homicides and other critical violent crime categories have stayed the same or gone up. Uh, do you think it's time to, for the, for this administration in the police department to, uh, reevaluate the current crime plan?
Good afternoon and thank you. Uh, we're always evaluating the, the, the crime plan. And when we are looking at place-based strategies, we're looking at people-based strategies. They are the national best prac, practice strategies. And so that's, that's the main thing we're looking at. In addition to the place-based strategy, microzones, or the people-based strategy, going after the impact persons who are drivers of crime, uh, the comprehensive violence reduction strategy, as we call it, focused deterrence or GPRS, is the national best practice to comprehensively deal with reducing gun violence by number one, heavily enforcing against those who are committing it, and then helping those impact players or those, uh, at-risk individuals have a pathway away from it. And so it is, we're evaluating it every single day. Uh, we're seeing, uh, some optimistic results that we hope to scale. And I'll let the, I'll let the Director of Monsey speak to that. But we are evaluating that every single day. It is, uh, it's also a number of factors that are, that are not related to policing that are causing the increase in violence. It's, and so we are looking at that. We're looking at the critical manpower shortage that we have and have continued to have. We were looking at for a long time, the critical vehicle shortage, that we couldn't even be in all the places where we wanted to be because we were working with almost 40% of our vehicles being down and not usable. So we couldn't, even if we had the people, couldn't even be in all of the places. So it's a number of factors, but it's not necessarily just the strategy, uh, that's accounting for the increase. And there are so many other factors in the criminal justice system that play an important role on bad actors making bad decisions that are far beyond just policing. So, so the answer is yes, we do evaluate it every single day. And I, I would imagine the answer is we need to stick to the strategy to make sure we can, uh, make sure it has efficacy, that the officers and detectives, uh, are performing the task and that we get the maximum use out of the most available resource, namely our people, and that we use technology to the best of our ability considering that we have far fewer people than we once had a few years ago.
Thank you. I'm, I'm concerned with sticking to the strategy because I believe that what we're doing right now is not working. My constituents believe that what we're doing right now is not working. Um, and, and I'm curious as to, and my constituents are curious as to, at what point does it become clear to us that it is not working? How long do we follow the strategy with the same, uh, levels of crime or increased levels of crime before we say, you know what? We, we have the wrong strategy in place. This is not working.
Well, I, I would say that there's more to the conversation, sir, than the strategy of policing because there are many factors, there are many factors that are causing people to commit crimes, that commit more brazen crimes, even to commit those brazen crimes right in the presence of police officers who are carrying out and executing the strategy. And so it becomes a much more broader conversation about why these individuals are doing what they're doing. Certainly, we always want to, uh, execute the best strategy and we believe that we are. Um, but there are other things that make people believe, that make people believe that the policing strategy is not working, but that what they're not counting are the other parts of the criminal justice system. They're not counting the change in the environment, they're not counting the decisions of the individuals, they're putting their whole belief on it all sits on the shoulders of police and that's why it's not working. I think that's an, that's an unfair assessment if people are making that assessment, an uninformed assessment.
Well, it's my assessment, so I guess it's uninformed, but that, that's my assessment of the situation is that what we're doing right now currently is not working. These, these levels of violence are, are simply not sustainable. And at some point, and I don't know what point that is, but I'm very curious as to when that point is going to come, we are going to collectively come to the conclusion that this is not working.
I think we all agree that it's not sustainable. You, we, you and I will agree on that, that it's not sustainable and that it is increasing. It, but it's increasing everywhere, in every city. Uh, and so we're, we're facing a number of issues and strategy is something we evaluate every single day. Is it working? Is it not working? But working means all the people performing the task and executing. And if the outcomes are not the desired outcomes that we would like to see, is that because we're not executing properly? Are, are there other factors that belong to the offender? Are other parts of the criminal justice system, are other reasons why people make those decisions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll come back to this point in a little bit.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Ramos?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everybody, for being here. I have a couple of questions. One is, um, we got a presentation from Baltimore Witness, um, recently, uh, in our council here, uh, council luncheon. They are seeing, uh, that the clearance rate for homicides, um, is actually at 17.7% and not the 37% that you have on your slide. Can you talk about the differences there and how it's calculated? The clearance rate for homicides?
Yes, ma'am. The clearance rate for homicide is basically any case that is cleared for 2022, the clearance rate is any case that's cleared in 2022. So for example, if we have a 2021 case that's cleared, that goes towards the 2022 clearance rate. But that, that's the way it's always calculated because you're constantly clearing cases.
And clearance meaning someone was arrested?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman, um, I, I, I took screenshots from that. I just want to clarify, uh, that stat was on convictions?
No, there's a previous slide on that particular, and I have the slide.
Sure.
It is, it's clearly.
16.8% for murder.
No, it's clearance. They have a separate slide for convictions, but there's a couple of slides up that, um, is clearance rate.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, please. I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate it. No, um, so, um, cause I'm trying to find here how they are defining it, um, but that their definition, uh, so there seems to be a big discrepancy from organizations that are actually working on, on this particular piece. So your definition is anybody who is arrested?
Not, not just our definition, the uniform crime reporting definition is.
That is clearance, anybody who's arrested.
Yes, there, there could be an exceptional clearance. For example, if we turn, we have several this year where we've turned over to the federal partners to indict the case and we clear the case exceptionally, the person is still being charged with the case, but to be in charge by our federal partners. Or if we have one where, um, for example, we have the suspect and the suspect is deceased, something like that, we can exceptionally clear them. But the clearance rate is either cleared through exception or cleared through arrest. Once we make a warrant, um, get a warrant, we have three of them right now that are in the warrant phase. Those cases are not cleared yet, because the warrant's still out there and it won't be cleared until the warrant is, the suspect is arrested.
Right. So it's arrest, it's not conviction. A conviction rate is different as you.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I'm gonna have to dig into this a little bit because it seems like there's discrepancy here around, you know, what the difference is.
Well, we, we're following the, the protocol of the FBI, which is the requirement for all law enforcement in America. And we have always followed it, will continue to follow that, those guidelines set forth, uh, by the FBI on the protocols for clearances.
Right. Okay.
There's strict guidelines for it.
Yeah. The other thing is that, you know, you could arrest the wrong person. I mean, it happens, right? And that's still considered cleared?
If we arrest, if we arrest on a case, there, it is considered a clearance. Yes.
And then if it's the wrong person for any reason through trial or whatever, does that?
It gets, it, it can then get corrected in the next year or if it happens in the same year, that can be adjusted. So just like, um, a crime is committed, we arrest the person immediately, it's affect, it's, it affects the clearance rate that year. If we, if a crime is committed and in the next year we get a warrant and make that arrest, it counts in the next year.
Sure.
But if it's overturned, the year it's overturned, it's then affected in that year.
Mm-hmm.
I could, I can probably clear up what that is. What they're probably looking at is they're probably looking at the 2020 year, 2022 cases that we've closed so far, not counting the 2021 cases that have been added to the 2022 year.
Uh, uh-huh. It's possible.
That, that's probably, and even that percentage is 21%. So it's slightly higher than, it, it just takes detectives some time to close the cases. So for example, we've closed, um, I believe we've closed 20 homicides this year from 2021 and prior because the detectives continue to work the cases and they get enough evidence to close the case.
But by the same token, people injured in one year that expire in the next year, that adds to our murder rate in the year.
Correct. I understand that. Yes.
We have 11 of those this year already.
Right. Right. Understood. Um, and there's, that makes, it's understood why that, why that happens. I understand that. Okay. Well, I'm gonna, uh, dig a little deeper on that at some point, but, um, and then you have a slide in here, um, forgive me to get back to it. Um, on the repeat offenders piece, because we talk about the fact that, oh, it's the next slide. Um, homicide arrests, suspects that were arrested year-to-date were 58 and arrested with priors, and then there's repeat violent offenders. Can you go through those definitions real quick in terms of the difference between priors and repeat violent offenders? Is it just priors, meaning they stole something from the market versus, you know, murdered somebody else?
So normally, uh, priors, any arrest that you may have had in your criminal history, period.
Okay.
And not all of those arrests may be crimes of violence. Crimes of violence are crimes against persons. When you're looking at the UCR crime type, crimes of violence are those things that are committed against persons.
And then so the repeat violent offenders are those that have been, uh, doing crime against people?
Exactly right. So it might've been aggravated assault, it could've been a robbery, it could've been another shooting, it could've been a rape. It's normally crimes against persons that, that, um, create that number of repeat violent offenders. It's a violent offense.
Okay. So I'm just trying to do the math quickly here. So you, the suspects arrested total, and then of those, 45 had priors, and of those, 24 had violent, repeat violent offenders. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
So when you're looking at the slide of, let me get to it so I can, I'm not, we're saying the same thing. So of the total suspects.
I'm looking at slide number three.
Mm-hmm. Of the total suspects arrested of 58, out of that 58, 24 of them are repeat violent offenders.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I was reading that properly.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, and then my second question, um, that's not necessarily related is, um, so we've had, uh, activity in the Northeast that we've brought to the Major's attention, and he's been doing a great job. But we knew that that activity, you know, car wash, um, gathering motorcycles, uh, you know, stuff that the neighbors knew what it was gonna end up, ending up in, and it did, and end up with one of those guys getting killed. Okay? So what I, and I think this happens across the city where folks are complaining, you know, we've got gathering, we've got, you know, activity happening, we're warning, we're warning, we're warning. And I get, I'm a big fan of the consent decree, I understand where we're going, that you can't, you know, just arrest those guys just because they're gathering there. Um, however, we knew, residents knew, it was gonna end up in a murder and it did. However, we knew, residents knew, it was gonna end up in a murder, and it did. So, what are the ways that our officers are engaging or are trying to address those issues where we know the community is seeing, there's a lot of activity here, you know, we need officers to come through to at least, you know, have a presence? And sometimes they do and sometimes they don't, depending on what else is happening. But we know it's gonna end, the neighbors are saying it's gonna end up with a shooting, and it did. The guy is dead. So, what, what are the protocols that we're asking our officers to go through when those kinds of things happen? When we brought, bring to the attention of the officers that we've got, or the major that we've got, activity happening here, could be legal, could not be illegal, and it's gonna end up in a, in a homicide because somebody is gonna start fighting each other and something happened. I don't know what the motivation was, this is on, in Coldstream, Homestead, Montebello. So, what, what are some of those things that we can make sure that we're doing to, to avoid that situation? And clearing corners, I know we're not doing, got it. But we need to figure out what to do because then it ends up in a homicide, in this particular case.
So, I'll make no assumptions about a specific set of incidents, and I'll just speak general here.
Sure, right, yeah.
So, I'm, I'm hearing different language and I just want to be clear on the question. You're asking me that if you see a certain thing, community has the inkling that this is some illegal activity, they're calling the police, what can we expect? Is that, are we, okay. So, if you're engaging with the district commanders, and I know that you are, just speaking generally here for all that are watching and listening, you're engaging with the district, the intelligence is important because what I want to always be very cautious of, and I'm listening for, is this broad brush. We get lots of different conversations that are not necessarily illegal behavior activity. So, what we do not do is police presence.
Correct.
If there's an issue that's concerning, we're asking the community to be involved and engaged to help us narrow the focus of who, who, who it is and what is happening, when it's happening. That we can set up a strategic response plan that allows everyone to know what to expect, where, where we are and what we are doing. Because I know that there are some situations that are very sensitive in nature in terms of how individuals are participating. For instance, we've seen this recent phenomenon na- nationally, especially in our region, with car gatherings, car shows, that we really try to respond to in a robust way that includes other attributes besides the district patrol car. That there's enough presence overhead or enough presence on cameras to be able to support the officers to make sure that we know what's going on and what, how they can appropriately respond and what the community can expect. I'll just use that as, as an example. So, oftentimes, we're responding to that, but again, we're balancing the response against what's happening in other parts of the district or other parts of the city overall. As you know, the last three weekends in the city, we've had a great deal of events that have gone on and we're balancing our presence in places. So, in times that we're having large-scale events or there are multitude of events, sometimes a response isn't as quickly as we would like, recognizing that officers are in other places at other times. But what we look for is the constant feedback loop from community to be able to share the information so proactively, we're able to do the investigative response beyond the immediate patrol response. So, if there's other violations, we can investigate those and deal with those accordingly, whether that's through vehicular citation or some other means. And again, I welcome the chief patrol to add on and I, I hope that answered some of your questions.
Yeah, and I know it's difficult because in this situation, the residents are calling me, they're not calling 911.
That's part of our challenge.
And I get that. I can't tell you how many times I've had to text the major at ridiculous times in the evening because that, this is, you know, what we're dealing with. So, it's a very, I get it, it's a very difficult balance, I think, as you said. But it's something that residents get frustrated about when they see and feel like there isn't action, you know, in the area. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, but I, I think to the, to the DC's point, as you mentioned, you know, unfortunately, when they go around the 911 system and it's set up for that, you know, that, that's an issue in itself. And I get that your availability and I know the major's availability. And we also get the same complaints in the chief of patrol's office as well as the police commissioner's office in reference to problematic issues or concerns from our constituents and communities. I will say that unfortunately, engagement may look different for everybody and for every situation. So, what one individual may think should result in some kind of arrest may actually be the engagement of that foot patrol and talking to individuals, making them aware of what they're doing. If there is an issue with that, sometimes the sheer presence of the officer getting out the car and individuals walking away, that's a level of engagement that we want, as long as they cease and desist that activity. So, the level of engagement can range from mere presence of walking foot to also some kind of law enforcement action.
Right, I just think that our, in this particular case, residents just kept sounding the alarm, sounding the alarm. This is gonna end up this way, this is gonna end up this way. And I know there's other things that, and, and then it does.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add an additional point of view to this, and this is an issue that I've been very intimately involved in, in the Eastern District, in the Southern District, and in a couple of others. These pop-up events, which it sounds like to some degree, this is what is happening in your area, sometimes we find out about them early, we get intelligence around it, it's structured, they advertise, not always, but sometimes. We're lucky when that happens. And when that happens, we are able to coordinate with other city resources, which is important because what we don't want the visual to be is that BPD is just here to stop people's fun. That is most important when the events are being organized by young people because it can very quickly turn into, oh, well, you just, you know, you know, kids have nothing to do and BP, BPD just wants to put the kibosh on that. And so, we've had a couple of youth organized pop-up events where we have brought in city resources such as housing, DOT, and a DPW. And what we did was, we created a cease and desist order that the law department prepared, the major met with the organizer of the event and, and the, and the DJ. The organizer was a kid, DJ was an adult, and said, hey, look, DJ, here's the letter, if you start this, because it's an unpermitted event, you're not allowed to have this, we're gonna take action. So, he left. Kids continued to want to party. We had angry parents screaming, hollering, carrying on on Greenmount, you know, making it seem as though we were the bad guys because we wanted to keep the kids and the residents safe. And, you know, this is a Herculean event, you know, effort to get all of these city resources there. Another kind of issue that we addressed in that, that particular instance is, this kid, again, supremely entrepreneurial, organized a food truck to be on-site. He had done this in other, other settings. We were able to get the food truck moved because surprise, that food truck didn't have any of the permits that they were required to have. And that is how we prefer to address these issues, these large-scale events. So, it is not just a policing effort, it is a citywide effort to address it, put the kibosh on it. And, and I'm glomming all of this onto what the other folks from operations said. And this is an issue that came to me, not because I have any involvement in operations, but because it became a political issue. When the event went on and the residents were angry, and the elected officials then learned about it and then became angry. So, that, you know, and so, as I became involved, you know, I, I pushed our folks and other folks to think critically and strategically and bigger. How are we gonna address this so that it can be safe for everyone?
No, and I, and I appreciate that. I'm tired, there's three big, there's three hotspots in Chum that I've been working to try to get, you know, housing and everybody on board. And it's just been a struggle, because there's also like two illegal car washes, right? And DOT's like, I don't know, I don't, it's not my job, you know, I don't know, I don't know. Like, that's super frustrating. I have another complaint too, but I'm not gonna bring it up. But so, I think that the, we'll continue to bring folks together, but, and because I agree that not everything has to be a police response, but having the police be involved in the fact that this is a hotspot, this is what we're seeing, I'm getting texts from the councilwoman at two o'clock in the morning, we need to figure this out, is, you know, I think we all sort of need to take initiative on that, right? So, I've had three hotspots. I, I know one already ended up in a murder. The other two, it's gonna happen unless we do something.
Councilwoman, I, I, I'm happy to work with you and try and bring folks to the table so that we can have everyone who needs to be a part of that there and kind of working in the same direction.
Yeah, thank you very much. I have other questions, but I'll pass along to-
Thank you, Councilwoman. We can't hear you right now.
Looks like he's frozen.
Still can't hear you, Councilman Cohen. Try turning off your camera. We still can't hear you. All right, we're gonna, Councilman, i- if you could keep trying at it, we'll hear you whenever it does come through, but we'll come back to you. And if, if we're unable to hear you, please just send me your question and we'll make sure to ask it of the department.
I'll, I'll-
Oh.
It's the audio.
It's the audio here, maybe. Try now? All right, we're gonna keep going and we'll keep working with the councilman to see if we can get his audio to work. In the meantime, I'll go on to my next question. And before I do that, I want to acknowledge Councilman Burnett, who's also joined the meeting virtually. He is with his newborn, unfortunately wasn't able to make it in, but I want to make sure that he's here for this important meeting. Question I've got, and this to the commissioner, so when we look at the department's initiative to reduce homicides and shootings, can you share with us what the strategic goal was for calendar year 2022? What, what did we set out to achieve?
Are you referring to the, the reduction goal or the reduction percentage?
Yeah, I, I, I would certainly say that, but also, were there any operational approaches that we set out to change or to achieve? I think you can interpret that as broadly as you'd like. I think it will be followed up by the second question tied to that, which is, did we develop any key performance indicators to measure our progress toward implementing that goal? So, you can answer that and how you'd like.
I believe-
I'm sorry, sir, I was trying to get myself together. So, if memory serves me correctly, we had at our last meeting a goal of forty percent for homicide, and correct me if I'm wrong, anyone on the team, I think it was forty percent clearance rate, I think is what the conversation was, and please feel free to correct me, I don't have that in front of me. In terms of KPIs, key performance indicator related to homicide, of course, clearance rate is one of those items. But for us, we're making sure that we're focusing on the right people. That weaves us into the larger strategy of the group violence reduction strategy that I know Director Jackson is gonna speak to. But again, that is, are we focusing on the right people in the right places? So, it is a, both the, the portion of our people-based strategy as well as our place-based strategy. And yes, we did develop some performance indicators tied to those metrics that include warrant service, that include, again, response to call types and, and other performance indicators. I'm happy to get back to you in writing any of the outcomes from those KPIs.
So, I just want to reiterate, so with regard to the goals that we set, I only heard one, it was that the, we were trying to get to a forty percent clearance rate for shootings and homicides. As best we can remember, what we set out to achieve. And then with regard to KPIs, we, we have those, I'd love to see those, that'd be really helpful. Do we look at those regularly, monthly? And then do we, do we also have that broken down by district in order to understand how each district is working toward those goals?
So, they're not broken by district. They are static in that way, so that we're evaluating each district to achieving that. Now, the, the tools in which the commander is using is in a red, in his or her toolbox. We're evaluating whether or not they're using those tools effectively that help to get the outcomes and the impacts to that KPI. But again, we look at that week over week in our comset, and we're talking about that as well as in our crime control meetings.
Can you give me an example, just so I can like wrap my head around, like what that might be?
Yeah, give me one second.
Thank you.
So, I'm just gonna kind of talk you through the template in terms of what we're looking at when we're dealing with our crime and we're getting the, the district commanders are giving us a response. For instance, we're looking at our, first of all, we're looking at any, the problems, any patterns or trends in this gun-related violence. So, if it's gun-related violence and they're looking at a particular geography, let's just say it's in the microzone. If, if the gun-related violence is in that microzone and they're up, then we're looking to see, how are you executing the use of your tools? Are you deploying units in that area? If you are, what are they doing? And then we look at what comes from the results of their enforcement, their engagement, their outreach, their arrests, we're looking at their response, their proactive engagements, whether that's foot, business checks, car stops, warrant service, gun offender registry checks, those persons that are on parole probation, are we participating with our partners to do PNP checks? And so, they'll, we'll look at what's happening in that geography, twenty-eight day against twenty-eight day, seven day against seven day, and then year-to-date against year-to-date to see if we're making any pluses or minuses as a portion of their focus. They'll, the district commanders will describe the problem, and the description of that problem is not just the police. That's why when I shared earlier, is are you partnering with anyone, are there any governmental partners? And then are you using your resources effectively? And are you incorporating equity? So, if our KPI, of course, is to reduce homicide, that's not something we're gonna be able to achieve by ourselves. So, we wanna just make sure as a portion of the KPI that we show where we're working with other partners. How was the, for instance, in the Western District as a microzone, how were we working with outreach and engagement through Monzi's office? What does that look like? Are any of those participants in violence related to the GVR strategy? Are we focusing on the right people? And I'm just using that as an example. And though I recognize that that's piloting in one district, we're using those same principles to evaluate as we prepare for scaling to what, whichever district is gonna be next. So, we've already changed the format of some of our meetings to be able to achieve those outcomes in other places as we scale. Again, we're looking at the problem, we're scanning it, we're describing the trend and pattern, and then we're evaluating the geographies. Are there other contributing factors in that geography that we'll need a different partner for? Is there an issue with lighting? Is there an issue with trash, with blight? That's a part of the conversation. From that, they'll develop an action plan, how they're going to address that issue, whether it's violent crime, environmental, or anything else. And that action plan is what's evaluated week over week. How are you doing with your plan that you set goals for? How are you achieving them? And then we speak to the partnerships that they're working with and how that's coming along, as well as an evaluation on what they're seeing with the crime. Is it shifting? Are we seeing any trends? Do we need to employ some other resources? So, that's an evaluation of if that helps give you an idea of how the meeting goes and what's expected. So, each district commander knows what he or she needs to show up with in response to those six different buckets when we're walking into comset. We're looking at that to include intelligence. What are you, are you debriefing all of your arrests? Are you getting any intelligence that we can make actionable? Are there any other factors contributing to this violence or whatever the issue may be in the geography or with a group or set of people?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. It sounds like you, you've kind of tackled it from a number of different areas and I think, and forgive me for not asking the clearest question, and where I'm trying to get here is, we set out to achieve a goal, even if that goal is to increase our clearance rate to forty percent. But we acknowledge that the, the ability to do that is based on intelligence and relationships that officers have in the streets. So, we then create a plan or a metric in order to measure business checks in areas after shootings and homicides to make sure that we're getting that additional intel. If it also includes partnering with other agencies in order to, you know, work effectively with partners or within, with, with community members, then using that also to develop KPIs around those relationships as well. And then therefore, looking back and saying, we did what we thought we were gonna do, here are the metrics to back it up, did it work? That, that's where I'm trying to get to. And it sounds like there was hodgepodge, maybe just because of the sort of loose way that I asked, asked the question, it sounds like you're trying to get to that. But that's what I'm going for, the sort of clear, linear, this is what we set out to do, this is what we thought would help us get there, and this is how we measure the implementation of those pieces. The, I, I guess this is sort of related to that question. So, one of the, you know, major tenants- tenets, as I alluded to earlier, of comstat is relentless follow-up and assessment. Essentially, that means that if it works, do more, and if it doesn't work, do less, or stop doing that and do something else. And our constant assessment, as the Commissioner alluded to, constant assessment of the implementation of that plan, what have we thought about changing? What has changed in our approach to the plan, based on intelligence, insights, implementation, and otherwise with regard to that plan, around specifically shootings and homicides?
So if I may kind of, and I won't make assumptions that we all kind of walk through the same, because we deal with this every day. So there is a one-year plan that includes different strategies. That one-year plan is broken into quarters. Every, though it's broken into quarters, it goes down to every week. So there's a layered approach to evaluating what the problems are. We evaluate whether or not it's working every quarter as a whole. However, we're looking at it every week. So the district commander is making adjustments week over week, if there's something that he or she is seeing, and sometimes it's sooner than week over week. If they're seeing a trend happen, they're responding to it. They're not waiting to the summary of a quarter. But we look at it more in-depth, quarter over quarter, to say, is there something happening here that we just didn't track? Because crime is also seasonal, and we can't abandon that evaluation of the crime in and of itself. So we look at the crime year over year, quarter over quarter, and then week over week. And with the seasonality of it, we make the adjustments every week. And I just wanted to kind of make sure that I was clear there.
That's very helpful, yes. And if you could help sort of, for all of us to clarify, like what are some of those things that might change? Are we talking just deployment, putting a person on this corner versus that corner? Or are we looking at bigger, more comprehensive changes depending on what we see? And I'll leave that to you.
All of the above, both and all of the above. So it is, the comstat is, when we're talking about the resource allocation and where we want the officers to be and what we want them doing, we're assessing that in comstat when we look at, okay, we put the map up and we challenge the commander, here is where your crime is. And then we overlay the deployment over the crime to make sure, okay, well, you're seeing crime in this area. If your deployment is overlaid and your officers are right where they're supposed to be, we're making two assessments. Is the plan working in regards to are your people executing properly? Secondly, is it working and is it translating into crime deterrence? Or displacement? Is it moving, is it being deterred altogether, or is it just moving to where we are not? And then we ask the question and challenge them, well, when you see the displacement effect, are you then adjusting based on the displacement? So if it's moved to the buffer zone, which is 500 feet outside of the microzone, are you real, are your officers being given instructions to move to where it was displaced to? And then what are you doing when you get there? And how are you still covering the original area? And so those are the questions we're asking every single week. And it's overlaying, and when we find that there are patterns of crime in areas, but the deployment is not overlaid properly where the crime is, then we hold the commander accountable because you're not putting your people in the right places. Then it is not just the right place, it's day of week, time of day. And we drill down all the way to the day of week and time of day where both property and violent crimes are occurring. And then make sure that platoon commanders, who are lieutenants and their sergeants, are adjusting not just weekly, but daily. Because if there is a particular day that shows patterns of crime, and then on those days, the locations, then on those days, there are certain hours within that day, we want them deploying to that, not just the area, but days of week and times of day. And all of that gets measured in comstat.
So that sounds like it's something that's determined mostly at the district level, of course, in.
District level and citywide. And then, once again, it is, you know, then we ask the questions. Okay, well, okay, the people are executing. We can see if they're executing. We can see the foot patrols, we can see the business checks, we can see their presence. And if we want to, we can actually go down to body cam footage of the officer to ensure that they're doing it. Second question is, is that deployment translating to criminals deciding not to commit crime, or going somewhere else to commit crime? Then it becomes the conversation, well, what's needed beyond policing to affect that? And how do we do that?
And when we create those metrics, are we monitoring the officer run sheets to make sure that they're actually performing these pieces, and just keeping track of that going forward? And so one, it's like the implementation of that plan, do we make sure that we're actually doing?
One of the first things we did was we digitized the run sheet. So there's no need for the handwritten run sheet. We can go straight to CAD data and body cam footage to verify that an officer was where he or she was supposed to be.
Great. And then do we then tie that to officer evaluations?
Yes.
Yes, not only to officer evaluation, because that's what we want in reference to audit and oversight at the supervisory level, be it first-line supervised sergeant or managerial level at the lieutenant. But it also is a question that we have at comstat in reference to, is what you're giving that area giving you the response that you need? And if not, then what? If it's foot, if it's directed patrol, then what it is? Because it may look different. You may look around in the Eastern District along that Miami Street corridor, you may see more business checks and foot from the Eastern District. But its bordering, its buffer zone, you will see directed patrol from the Southeast, because it ebbs and flows depending on what the crime is and how that district commander's response is. It also is oversight for me and my executive team of asking the hard question of, is what you're putting on that crime plan, is it giving you the results that you want? And if not, when did you notice it? When did you make the change to change it? And what did you do about it? We're holding them down to policy, process, and implementation of that, and then an audit of that, and an audit of that implementation.
Excellent, thank you. I, we weren't able to get a question from Councilman Cohen, so he actually sent it to me by text. And his request was a request from the committee that moving forward, could we get data each quarter on the total number of cases that were sent for prosecution, but declined to be prosecuted, all Part I crimes, for all Part I crimes? Yes.
Due respect, we may not have that information, because that's coming from the prosecutor's or the state attorney's office. So while we would have, every arrest we make goes to the state's attorney's office, we would not necessarily have, be able to track all the information regarding the status of prosecution, because that is not something that happens at the moment we turn it over to SAO. There could be a long process before a determination is made or evaluation is made. And again, that's not data that we readily have available. I would request that the committee direct that request to the state attorney's office, who would have such available information, because we don't necessarily have it.
Got it. Thank you. We will direct that to the state attorney's office. And, please, go ahead, Councilman Porter.
Uh, no, I believe Councilman Costello.
Thank you. My understanding is that a officer was recently disciplined for yelling at a suspect who had a firearm, quote, something to the effect of, quote, "Put down the effing gun," end quote. Is there any truth to that?
I will certainly find out.
Please.
Would you happen to know the answer? We will find that out and get that back to you ASAP.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Porter?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I did have a quick question about the violence reduction technology. You know, we've been talking about it all day, about the near-record levels of violent crimes. I specifically want to talk through the CityWatch program. There was an article that came out about the effectiveness of the CityWatch program, particularly the amount of cameras that were not working in the CityWatch program. I wanted to understand, one, what you all are doing about it from a quality assurance perspective. But given that we spend quite a few dollars on that particular program, what are you all doing internally to ensure that we kind of maximize that program? Because it's a very important program that, from what I understand, speaking with Major Veltie, who's great down in Southern District, how utilization of that program really kind of connects to solve crime?
I can start off, and I'll ask other members of the team to come in. We had a presentation last week, I believe, where the major gave a, I believe, of all of the cameras, we're averaging about 7% or less are broken, and they're broken because of two reasons. One, if there is damage to the pole, because a car or vehicle crashed it, that takes a little while longer to get up and running. When the camera itself is just malfunctioning, when we get the report, I believe he said the turnaround time was 24 hours. The turnaround time to get it working again.
It's the other way.
It's the other way around.
Okay.
The other way around.
Thank you, Director Jackson.
Thank you for that.
But more importantly, how can we leverage some of the services that we already have in the city to kind of expedite that quick turnaround time? One of the ways that, you know, just putting on notice that I'll be kind of really spearheading in the next budget season, is how we can produce inter-agency agreements between different agencies that can solve a lot of these problems that we're not kind of moving forward with, like external contractors. We're utilizing our city services to get these things done.
I think the first part of the answer is to expand our BICID Baltimore Community Intelligence Center model, which we have in four of our districts, to the other five districts. We have plans to move forward on that with financing, to do that, which would give us the same capability in all nine districts as we have in four. And we're seeing really good results, officers using the license plate reader, the shot spotter alerts, the crime cameras, where they're not only looking at the cameras in response to a crime in a follow-up investigation, but are proactively looking and are seeing gun, you know, gun carrying and drug transactions. And they are dispatching themselves and other officers directly to what they're seeing on camera. And so we're seeing great success with that in the districts that have that, but five districts don't. And so we're working to expand that to all nine districts.
And is there an opportunity whereby the five districts that we do not have, that there can be some reallocation of funds to ensure that those five districts will have those types of cameras?
Absolutely. And right now, we're sharing technology, so the districts that have it are sharing with the districts that don't, even the resources and the personnel. So though some districts might not have a BICID, they're utilizing their neighbor's BICID to tap into their cameras and then dispatch to that. So we're doubling up, but we absolutely plan to fund and scale that to all nine districts.
And the Chief of Staff, if you could provide a timeline.
Specifically, the timeline for the Commissioners with the delivery of BICID capability for the other nine districts. We have state funds that we've received this fiscal year, so July 1. We have programmed that money to be able to sustain BICIDs in all other five remaining districts. So the goal is to have implementation before the end of this fiscal year, so we could draw down on the state money to do that. So essentially, between now and the end of June, is to deploy that in all nine districts, using state funds that we've received.
And if possible, if it can be, like, I don't know if you're prioritizing those five districts, particularly some of the ones that are seeing the more violent crime, like Southern District. We are seeing that, like, really, really violent crime down there. And so I would assume that there's some sort of priority level to those five.
I mean, we're moving in all five simultaneously, if we can. I mean, the funding is there for all five, so that's not the issue. The issue is whether we can spec out the space, make sure that we can get the feeds in, the technology in. And so that's part of the planning process of which districts can we identify that quickly? And, but we're doing it, you know, across all five remaining districts simultaneously, so.
And if you could share, Mr. Chair, I'm so sorry, may I have another question, please? If you can share the, I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. Chair. And if you, Mr. Chief of Staff, if you can provide the barriers that you all are experiencing, like, as it relates to BICID programs, like, is it location? Is it, you know, the undergirdings of the foundation for, you know, like, lining? Like, what are the barriers?
The barriers have been resources, and we have those in hand, financial resources. It's, there's a component that we need to be able to hire up staff for research analytics. But again, that's based on budget, and we have state resources now to be able to fund those efforts. And in addition to just technology deployment resources, you know, funding for that, those have both been identified. I think the only challenge now is just logistics of physically installing the equipment, assigning the staff, making sure that we're going through our selection processes for which supervisors need to be selected for those positions. So some internal processes that we'll have to engage with, which will take time to spin up. But ultimately, the goal is to have all of that done between now and June 30th of next year, because we know and see the value that they bring to the other districts, you know. And it's kind of funny, some commanders that would serve in one district and then move to another that used to have a BICID and then they don't, they're asking, hey, you know, that was really great, can I get that in my district now? That's a piece of the puzzle that we are seeing a huge force multiplier for it. And it's embedded with the CityWatch program and all the other technological capabilities. And that embedded research analytics, it's also, you know, the BICID model has state attorneys there, you know, part of the process, part of the evaluation process, so that we can ensure that they are adopting cases at every level, that vertical prosecution model, you know, and the resources from Monzie are embedded into them as well. So it's a multifaceted approach, and it's really been a big game changer for the Western, the Eastern, the Southwestern, and the Central who have them now.
And I assume those positions that you were bringing on, those are budget-neutral positions and not added positions to the already existing budget, correct?
Not from state, not from city funds. It's the state fund, the state funds are recurring, correct. The state funds are recurring that we'll be able to support them in the future years, so.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before I hand over to Councilwoman Ramos, I just want to note, we're gonna carry this portion of the meeting until about 3:00. I see there's still a lot of questions, and I want to make sure that folks have an opportunity to ask those questions before we move on to Monzie. So I just want to be cognizant of time, just so, I think we have plenty, but just want to keep that in everyone's head. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to just say thank you to BPD for the quick response you had with the fires that were in my district. Obviously, the firefighters, you know, got to it in time before any injuries. But I know that you're cooperating with ATF and FBI to actually figure out what's going on and what happened. And it's been, I think, a difficult investigation for a lot of reasons, is what I understand. But I do, I'm glad that you're, you know, working towards a solution. Can you talk about arsons in our city and the conviction, you know, the clearance rate and conviction rate for arsons? Because we have had, not just in my district, but we, and we think that the, there are many, there are a few arsons that we had in Better Waverly that may have been connected. But, you know, what are we looking at here in terms of the possibilities that we might actually be able to find this person?
I'll start, and I'll welcome the Chief of Detectives to join in. Arsons are often a very arduous and long investigation for lots of different reasons. We're partnering, of course, with our fire department, and we partner with other partners. So when we're working arson investigations, that's nothing we're doing independent of ourselves. It's a joint investigation, and it often takes, as I said, quite a bit of time, because there's a lot of lab-related results that are needed and different types of evidence needed. So in terms of case overall and any more detail, I'm going to welcome the Chief of Detectives.
Talk about that case in detail, because.
I'm not talking about the case in detail. Nope, can't share that, but I'm just wanting to kind of give any understanding specifically that you needed about arsons and how we investigate them and what we're doing. If there was, generally, I'm not specifically talking about any one case at all. But we are working with all of our partners with all of the investigations that we have that are arson-related. Colonel Worley?
Yes, ma'am. The arson, the arson clearance rate is only roughly about 15%. Basically, what happens, like the DC said, they are arduous investigations that take a while. And we worked hand-in-hand with FBI from the fire, I mean, from the FIB, from the Fire Department, to work with those cases. And like the cases you're talking about, it's a year-long investigation, and probably ends up being. But that's the percentage rate that it is in different detectives. We constantly monitor the detectives and the clearance rates. I'm sorry, I actually misread that. It's 31% compared to 25 from last year. I looked at the cleared cases. But it's 31% compared to 25 from last year. There's a total of 41 cases so far this year. 28 of them are open. 10 arrests have been made, three open warrants. Two of them have been cleared exceptionally.
Right. We learned in one of our previous hearings last year that some of the causes of the arson were actually domestic violence, which is not necessarily the case in my case, but in general. So it's unfortunate that we can't get that, it's gonna be difficult to get that percentage up. to get that percentage up, just because, you know, unless it's, a lot of these are domestic violence and you know who the person is in that regard. But in some of these, we don't know, right?
Correct, yes, ma'am. But the 30, the clearance rate is up this year a little bit from about 6% from last year. So it's a third of the cases that we're clearing. And that doesn't doesn't necessarily mean the other cases aren't going to be cleared, because it just takes a while because of the investigations and what we have to send out to get data that comes back on the origin, where it started, and then hopefully we get a, some cooperation or witness who can point us in the direction of who may have set the fire or was seen leaving the location.
Yeah, no, I understand investigators are crawling all over the neighborhood at the moment. I hope we get a resolution to that particular case. It's very important to me. Separate question. I also recently had a homicide in the district that could have been a botched robbery. So does the police department gather intelligence on the number of incidents that started out as like a carjacking or robbery and then ended up with a shooting or a homicide? And then what kind of information do you take from those cases to try to, you know, avoid that happening in the future?
Yes, we get a report, we get a report, I get a report every week, basically has the motive from the homicides. Now, some of them we can't, we can't, unfortunately, the majority of them, we never find out what the motive actually is. But we do, and we know immediately, if it's a robbery, we start to get with our citywide robbery unit, or we go with patrol who handles the robberies within the districts, and we connect it. Like, for example, we have a case working in a part of the city right now that's connected to carjacking, street robberies, commercial robberies, and a couple homicides. It started out basically as a robbery, and it escalated to a couple of different homicides. And of course, we've had some really bad incidents. Every homicide's bad, but we've had some really tragic, tragic incidents this year that started out as possible robberies or carjackings that turned into homicides. But we constantly track them and maneuver our people around while the detectives are investigating. We get with patrol, and then patrol moves to assets. Plus, we also have our mobile metro team that we can move around to cup, to address it using all of our technology to try to close the case.
So do we know what percentage of our homicides happened in that way, where they were either connected to a carjacking or were a carjacking or a robbery?
I can get that. I'm not sure if I can pull that report right now, but I can definitely get that.
You can get that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Can you repeat it one more time?
Yeah, sure. The percentage of our homicides that are related to like a robbery or a carjacking gone wrong, basically. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. My next question is, I want to stick to the the theme, you guys know I love stats and the stat process. I just want to quickly ask, does the department currently have a segment of officer supervisors in service training dedicated to teaching personnel about the ComStat process and how they fit into the system?
One, one more time with the question, do we have people teaching officers about the ComStat process?
About the process and how they fit into the process, how their metrics roll up to the bigger system?
Yeah, it just so happened the Deputy Commissioner of Compliance just stepped out to the restroom, but they have been, he and his team have been going to roll calls personally from the compliance unit to talk about, well, first of all, to answer questions, and then talk about what the consent decree is, what the consent decree is not, and to answer their questions about clarity and, you know, what we can do as opposed to what we can't do. And so I know he just stepped out, other members of his team are here, but they've literally been going to roll calls every week to do that. And then it's a portion of ComStat where we talk about other types of consent decree compliance and metrics that we're looking to meet. And our scorecards on different parts of the consent decree that we're measuring, that's a part of the various of the ComStat as well. For, but that's for commanders. But they are going to ComStat, different roll calls throughout the week.
And I know Deputy Commissioner, you walked out of room for the question, but it was just a matter of.
Deputy Sullivan.
Oh, Deputy Sullivan, okay.
He's the Deputy Commissioner of Compliance, and I know for a fact he's been going to roll calls. He should be back in just a second, but yes.
But I will say on the line, if you don't mind, Commissioner, is that it does make, meet the granular, granular level of getting it down to the officers. The push is for us doing the ComStat process of advising the district commanders and their representatives there, but also it's indicative upon the district commanders, their managers, and first-line supervisors to explain the why to that frontline officer. We're asking you to do this 10 to 15 minutes of foot or whatever it is, because when you explain the why, the what becomes more important. So sometimes an officer doesn't understand, I just know I'm supposed to go here and stand for whatever. But you have to explain what's the importance of it and what's the desired outcome. So yes, it's being done at the roll call levels, but it's also done by, by the district commanders as well as myself. When I go to a scene, if I have the time, where I'll see an officer walking foot, I will ask them, why are you here? Do you understand the impact of it? And some do and some don't. And then I have the opportunity then, not only to build a relationship and a rapport with this officer, but also to explain to them the importance of what they're doing in the bigger picture and how they are a part of it.
That's helpful. I think along those lines, I think it's also helpful for our officers to understand, and as part of my questions earlier, how they are evaluated and why they're evaluated that way, and how it ties into the broader crime strategy and the plan and their implementation of that plan. So appreciate that. And if we have any additional detail on.
Yeah, I take, and I meant to tell you this earlier, I, we, we've been doing this since early 2019. It stopped for a little while during COVID for about a year, but we resumed it early this year. I take a group of officers every single month to breakfast and 20. And sometimes we take a group of civilians, but every month, we take them to breakfast at the center club, very nice environment. And it's their opportunity to ask me any questions and to explain all the things that they might not know, or things that might not make it down through the chain of command sometimes with vertical communication. So that's just one thing we do. But we, we are constantly talking about what the consent decree is, what the consent decree isn't. Deputy, Deputy Commissioner, the question was, are we teaching officers about the consent decree? And I explain to them about your roll call.
Or not, not just the consent decree, but specifically the ComStat process.
And if I can just add to that, you know, I know he's here now and can maybe answer some of this question, but we do try to impart through those modes of communication the Commissioner just mentioned, whether it is these monthly meetings, breakfast meetings, or whatever it is, or video messaging, or roll calls, that historically, we ask for a lot of data, and it's been a data grab, and people are like, why am I producing this report? And the message that we've been trying to deliver is exactly what Colonel Jones said, this is why you are producing the report. It is used to evaluate whether or not our tactics are actually working. If they are, let's keep doing it, as you said. If they're not, why aren't they working correctly? And lots of times, that can be on us, because we don't communicate effectively down to, you know, this is what you should be doing specifically. Then we adjust how we communicate. Or if someone is not communicating down to their troops, if you will, we, we make adjustments there as necessary to. And so that why piece is critical to your question, and that is happening. DC Sullivan is back.
No, specific to the consent decree, the consent decree implementation unit and the entire Compliance Bureau makes roll calls all, all year round. We've made all districts, all three shifts. We do that on an ongoing basis to be able to take questions. Right now, we're going to, to areas outside of patrol, to, to areas in CID, to make sure that we answer any questions they have about the process. And it's not just the process of the consent decree, but processes around all the functions of the Compliance Bureau. And then, you know, as far as ComStat training, you know, that's something that's, I believe, discussed as Colonel Jones probably alluded to in the districts and that communication that happens in the Operational Bureau.
And another thing that we've tried to do as well is that we have a lot of constituencies that we need to produce data for, whether it is us, you know, managing the agency, these forums in the City Council, Police Stat, or wherever else it might be. And we've tried to streamline the requests for data, if you will, so that people are not making redundant charts or graphs or spreadsheets. Try to make it more efficient, basically. And again, we're not just asking for stuff to make ourselves feel good. We're asking our, asking for stuff so that we can make good resource management decisions.
We didn't mention this, but is this at all a part of the academy training?
Are you talking specifically around consent decree? Are you talking about ComStat and ComStat processes?
As we're training recruits to the department, our new class coming in, at any point, do we explain to them what ComStat is, how we use that to measure our effectiveness, and even more, how it rolls down to even foot patrol? Do we do that as a part of the academy?
I think we, we talk about it, but it's not a part of the correct, the training curriculum. ComStat is generally for command members to present out on and for us to evaluate the commander, this 360-degree commander performance. Though we talk about it, and though we bring officers in at the front end of ComStat to, to give out awards and to show our appreciation, especially for something they may have done really well. So we do recognition at the beginning of ComStat every week where we bring officers in from all over the department. It's not part of the training curriculum. It is part of preparing to be sergeant, lieutenant, and higher. And then this 40-hour management course we just put on, we are preparing members for ComStat at various levels, but it's not, it's not part of the training curriculum to be an entry-level police officer.
Got it. Thank you. The, my next question is about the gun offender registry. What is the status of the gun offender registry, and are we still using it?
Okay, I'll start and welcome Colonel Worley to jump in. Thank you for that question, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we still utilize our gun offender registry. It's a law. And we still do have a unit that stands, that participates and stands it up, but we share that information throughout the agency. So we do gun offender registry checks to ensure that there's compliance to the law. And again, Colonel Worley, feel free to add anything additional.
Yes, sir. We, we actually have a sergeant and three officers and a civilian assigned to the gun offender registry. Mainly, partly, they do the home checks, and they just recently changed the law where they have to be on it from five years instead of three years. So it takes, they, they have to come in and register, basically, once they get assigned by the judge to enter the gun offender registry. They have to come in and register, and then they're checked every six months to make sure that they still have the same address. They come in, we do visits to their homes to make sure they're still living in the same location. Patrol does the visits. And they follow up basically with the court documents to make sure that they're compliant.
Got it. And as far as the outcomes of bail reviews, do we check how many of those bail reviews result in violators being held without bail?
Not to my knowledge. So we can see if a gun offender registry participant is violates or is a part of the criminal enterprise, but not during the bail review process. We don't, we're not participating in that way.
I, I, I think there's a huge opportunity there. I know one of the things that we did during GunStat, when we held that, was we used to track for every gun case that, that happened, the bail, the bail outcomes. We also tracked the outcomes of the cases. And so I guess going back to Councilman Cohen's question about the outcomes from these cases, I would, I would say specifically for our gun cases, these are folks who have the capacity to shoot someone and have shown that they, they will carry a gun. We should, we should know what, what comes of those cases. Certainly, we should know if those people end up back on the street. So I'm, I'm really, I think we should try and get that information and certainly track that regularly if we can.
I think that is certainly tied to the previous question, and that may be something that, that information may come from courts, rather, the first one comes from the prosecutor. I think this information will likely come from courts. We can certainly ask for it, but I just, we don't have readily access to provide it.
Yeah. And I would say, Commissioner, we've had a number of conversations privately about this, but I think as we think about every step of the way, once we've identified that someone is having issues, and maybe they, they're caught with a gun, an illegal gun, that is an opportunity to intervene. And so at, at every step of the way, we should be working with that person. I think that the director then comes into play.
That ties in perfectly with what, what we're aiming to do as we speak.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And I'll hand it back over to this side. Any other questions? Councilman Porter, Councilman, Councilwoman.
Not for this section. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos, no further questions. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on, and we're going to move to our next section of the meeting and allow the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement to start with their presentation. So Director Jackson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name's Shante Jackson. I'm the Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, and I'm joined by a few members of my team today. Stephanie Mavronis, Chief of Staff for Monti, Terrence Nash, who is the Deputy Director of the Group Violence Reduction Strategy. And I'm also joined by Jeremy Biddle, who serves as the local on-the-ground representative for Monti's GPRS technical advisors. As the chief gets the slides up, want to share that I'm going to be providing two main updates today to the committee before answering questions. A progress update on the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, since we've rounded out our first year, the foundational year for all intents and purposes. This is our annual update with the City Council on this work. We have published the annual report on our website. We'll also be sharing an update on the Group Violence Reduction Strategy. So we'll start with an overview of progress towards the implementation of the Violence Prevention Plan. Pillar one is public health approach to violence. And when we look at this first item here, we're well in progress with regard to the implementation of the Group Violence Reduction Strategy. As the Police Commissioner and his team alluded to, we're actively piloting that strategy in the Western District, and we're working towards scale. We've laid a solid foundation for GPRS, and we're working in partnership with both BPD and the State's Attorney's Office here. With regard to our CVI programs, we are also in progress here. We've developed a framework for the community violence intervention ecosystem that includes not only violence intervention programming, but also victim services, intensive life coaching, hospital-based response, school-based response, and other wraparound supports. This is an intentional and marked shift from what the city has done in the past, where we have seen very disconnected and disparate installations of community violence intervention programming being stood up. We also instituted a CVI standard operations manual for all of the organizations that we contract with to make sure that folks are in adherence to contractual obligations moving forward. So in the process of developing a school-based violence intervention pilot as well, that's going to be rolling out this year in three Baltimore City public high schools in partnership with BCPSS. And we're going to be focused on the integration of CVI and GPRS as the mayor's dual approach to gun violence here. And then last, but certainly not least, here is the work that we've been doing with regard to holding gun traffickers and straw purchasers accountable. BPD's led the way here. This work is in progress. They have folks who are embedded in the USAO's office to aid in gun trafficking investigations here, and the administration continues to be a strong advocate, both, both locally and nationally on this front. I think that members of this body know that back in June, Baltimore City filed a lawsuit against the nation's largest gun manufacturer, ghost gun manufacturer here. Next slide, please. So as we think about victim services, again, in progress, we are expanding our victim services work. For the first time ever, Monti's prioritized and laid a solid foundation for expanding victim services for gunshot survivors. It is worth noting that these services never existed in Baltimore City before. If someone got shot in Baltimore City and wanted to be provided services at a governmental level, they would need to go to the state to get those sorts of services. Now, that being said, that doesn't reduce the impact that our community-based organizations who have been providing these services for many years in the, in the city afforded those victims, but speaks deliberately those victims, but speaks deliberately to the mayor's intentionality around making sure that, um, gunshot victims are indeed classified as victims, um, and supported as survivors. So we've started providing case management services and referrals to residents who are broadly impacted by gun violence and other traumatic events. Uh, we've been working with BPD's victim services team to consider how we can best fill the gaps and work together. In early fiscal year '23, uh, we're going to be releasing an assessment of the treatment of victims that was conducted by the Department of Justice and a shared work plan between BPD, MONC, and the Mayor's Office for improving victim services and closing those gaps citywide. We've also established a gun violence victim services manager position within MONC, which is now live on the city's career portal. As we think about, um, victimization for those who are survivors of intimate partner violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking, this work too is well underway. Uh, in, uh, our budget hearing, there was a question asked, um, I think by, uh, Councilman Costello at the time about the Domestic Violence High Risk Task Force. Through a grant that we got from the Office of Violence Against Women, we were able to convene that task force, um, which focuses on increasing Baltimore's capacity to hold perpetrators accountable while improving, uh, survivor, uh, safety. And the work of that group is going to feed directly into the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team, um, that has already been reconvened and we're looking to close gaps associated with that so that we can prevent deaths that are directly connected to domestic violence in our city. With the support of ARPA dollars, we also doubled the hours of operation at the Baltimore Visitation Center, um, which is a safe place where families who have history of domestic violence can engage with visitation between their children in a monitored setting. So before these ARPA dollars, that could only happen, um, once every two weeks on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And with the use of ARPA dollars, we are now able to do that every single week. So since the beginning of the calendar year, the Visitation Center has served 55 families. That includes 74 children aged three months to 16 years old and has held 372 non-custodial parent and child partnership meetings. The center's on track to hit an annual target of 535 non-custodial parent and child sessions, having already reached 70% of that goal as of June 30th. Last, but certainly not least, MONC is a proud partner with Mercy Medical Center, specifically their forensic nursing program and the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, which established the Blue Dot Program. It's a 24/7 emergency response to human trafficking survivors and sex workers in Baltimore City and surrounding jurisdictions. This program has already received 45 suspected human trafficking referrals since January of this year. We've conducted anti-human trafficking trainings across our public safety personnel, including the Baltimore Police Department, including EMS, including fire, to make sure that folks are equipped with the tools necessary to identify potential victims of human trafficking. We've conducted about 16, or trained about 1,600 people since the beginning of the year, and we anticipate training about 1,000 more before the year's up. And last, but not least, on this item, we've developed our initial iteration of IPV Stat. Um, and we are working in partnership with the Office of Performance and Innovation and the Baltimore Police Department to build the tool out. Next slide. So on to youth justice. Um, we're in progress around the adoption of community-based solutions to reduce youth arrests and incarceration. The Sidestep Youth Diversion Program is a program that was born out of the Western after the death of Freddie Gray in police custody. This is something that we have been partnering with BPD, um, again, in the Western District. This is a first-of-its-con program here in Baltimore City and quite frankly, is the second only in the country, followed by, um, or in it, behind Los Angeles County, uh, where we are actually working to make sure that when we've got young folks who have committed category-two offenses, that don't necessarily mean that they need to be incarcerated, but need to be provided with, uh, opportunities, that we're doing the work associated with that. You asked about, uh, training specifically for BPD officers. Worth noting here that MONC did partner with BPD officers to train 109 sworn BPD personnel, um, in the Western District, uh, with regard to this, and that we partner with the Center for Urban Families to make sure that the program is embedded in the community and not in a place that might feel punitive, uh, to a young person. We're actively working in partnership with BPD, DJS, the Office of the Public Defender, on a plan to scale up Sidestep, um, while also preparing for the program's initial evaluation. We are pending implementation on violence intervention and prevention programs for school-aged youth. MONC did secure, uh, funds over $700,000 in order to launch a school-based violence intervention pilot program, and we plan on standing up, uh, this, this year, uh, in those three schools that I mentioned before. And then around the implementation of agency-level changes to shift, uh, the outcomes in the long term for our young people, this is implemented. Uh, we worked very closely with the Baltimore City Health Department, with a whole host of other city agencies and quasi-agency state agencies in order to publicly release the 2021 Child Fatality Review Report. This was the first time this report had been produced in five years. The report found that in the past five years, that we had 208 young people under the age of 18, um, die, and that 91% of those deaths were preventable deaths. And so the work that we are charged with doing there in partnership with the Health, uh, Commissioner, uh, the public school system, with Office of Children and Family Success, with Social Services and others, is to really deepen the inter-agency work associated with the points of intervention so that we catch our young folks further upstream before these outcomes become a reality. And MONC serves as the accountability partner there. So going on to community healing, we're in progress around training our residents in trauma-informed approaches. We've been working, um, really closely in coordination with the Trauma Informed Care Task Force to discuss the scope of this citywide training, and we're aiming to deliver the training to residents starting in January of 2023. Next, we've implemented a shooting response protocol to support people and communities. We are piloting, uh, proactive response in Howard Park right now and a reactive response, uh, to what we all know to be a highly traumatic mass shooting on the 700 block of North Rose Street in partnership with the community. This is the on-the-ground experience that we are, uh, using to help us tailor our process maps to make sure that we're building this out effectively, uh, both for proactive and reactive events. Um, MONC also secured funding and developed a plan for upfitting a city-owned RV that will serve as the mobile unit that gets deployed in Baltimore's, uh, communities during our coordinated neighborhood stabilization responses and the vehicle slated to be, uh, ready for us to go before the end of this calendar year. Next, we're in progress on the promotion of mediation services to resolve conflict. We often hear the Police Commissioner say, uh, that the violence in our city is predominantly fueled by, um, an inability to effectively manage what happens when your anger is activated or when you feel disrespected, uh, or when you feel let down. So in the foundational year, we started the informal promotion of these services and we are building out the efforts to make sure that we can promote mediation services to resolve conflict across the city. The goal is for community mediation services to be integrated both in the outreach efforts of the city of Baltimore and in BPD's community liaisons. Uh, I wanna be really clear here that when we talk about mediation services, we aren't just talking about violence interruption when we think about community violence intervention. We're literally talking about community-based mediation services where we can, um, train folks and leverage the ability to solve conflict peacefully, um, in, in the heat of the moment. Um, next up and in progress is the expansion of our community-based harm reduction supports. We are continuing to work with, uh, Health Commissioner and her team on this. We funded harm reduction advocacy organizations such as Turk House, and we are planning to conduct a citywide Narcan training this year, uh, where we would be inviting all Baltimoreans to actively participate in and on-the-spot, uh, training. We know that the opioid epidemic here in Baltimore City, those deaths eclipse our homicide deaths, and, um, it is important that we do the work of, um, harm reduction as we do the work of gun violence reduction. And then also here, the acceleration and the expansion of our behavioral health interventions and all, our alternatives to policing. This really revolves around 911 diversion. This work is in progress as well. Baltimore City, year over year, um, has to respond to well over a million 911 calls. And I think that it's important for Baltimoreans, for the public, to know that every time a 911 call comes in, there has to be a response to that call. We don't get to say, "Ma'am, this is an emergency. We aren't going to respond." One of our agencies, one of our public safety agencies, has to respond. And so this work associated with 911 diversion is multifaceted. Um, and you all have probably heard most recently, um, with regard to the work associated with the Behavioral Health Pilot that's currently active, um, the pilot program began by diverting two suicidal ideation call types. Um, and through the quality assurance process in April of this year, the program expanded to include a third similar call type. As the mayor mentioned last week, uh, at a press conference, throughout the last year, over 500 911 calls have been connected to the Here to Help hotline and an estimated 300, um, hours of fire and BPD time have been saved. So we already know that we've gotten a federal earmark, um, thanks to our federal partners there. The pilot program is going to be expanded to have a non-police response to more behavioral health calls that come in through 911. In addition to that, MONC is also expanding its work because we've been charged with identifying at least four additional call types that can be diverted from emergency personnel that are not behavioral health-related. Uh, we have taken care of securing funding to get a Fuse Fellow and in fact, have selected that Fuse Fellow who is going to be working with us over the course of the next year to do that. We've also, um, heard recently from the Fire Department, uh, I'm sorry, from the Police Department, that the Smart Policing Initiative is another opportunity for us to reduce call burden, uh, by utilizing online and telephonic reporting mechanisms so that we can prioritize how we're getting our emergency personnel out to respond to, um, the events that they should be responding to. Uh, a couple more points here, uh, with regard to, uh, the reduction of barriers to city government employment. This is in progress. Uh, the mayor suspended pre-employment drug screening for public employees very early on into the administration, um, for non-safety sensitive positions. And MONC's also begun conversations with the Office of Equity and Civil Rights and Wage Enforcement and DHR to identify additional barriers to expand, uh, the ability for individuals who have experienced incarceration, uh, to gain employment. Pending implementation is an engagement and truth and reconciliation conversations to, uh, increase public trust. So MONC in fiscal year '23 will be taking the lead on facilitating discussions between BPD and community members about the harms and immediate ways to improve police and community cooperation so that we can truly co-produce public safety together. We know that it's going to take, um, some work to make sure that, um, the relationship between, uh, our residents and our officers, uh, is one that assists us with shifting the tide of gun violence in our community and also with the long-term healing. This work aligns perfectly with the work of the consent decree that is already happening, um, by BPD. With regard to, um, the relationships with our key constituencies, this is in progress. We are working to convene, uh, with the newly-created Office of LBGTQ Affairs, the Office for, uh, Immigrant Affairs, the Mayor's Office on African-American Male Engagement, and community-based organizations, um, around the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan. And we've also been actively attending community association meetings, uh, with other community-based groups. On reentry, much of this work is in progress. We have officially convened, um, in partnership with Pivot, which is a returning citizens' uh, community-based organization that supports women, um, who are incarcerated, and the University of Maryland School of Social Work through the Baltimore Reconnects Program, uh, will be standing up a reentry action council. That membership is gonna intentionally include folks with lived experience, those who are direct service providers, and those who are advocates in this space. Safe return plans for returning citizens. We have developed the intake and case management process associated with this work. In fact, not too long ago, my team and I visited all of the, um, the DPSCS facilities here in Baltimore City, taking a tour to have a deeper understanding of the challenges associated with those who are behind the wall and those who are working to support them, um, as they prepare to be, uh, released from incarceration. So that working relationship with DPSCS is one that is strong. We meet with them every single month, um, for the purpose of developing the Returning Citizens Behind the Wall Initiative. Onto pillar two here. Again, all in progress. Uh, we continue to focus on the capacity-building efforts of our community-based organizations, working really closely with the Baltimore Neighborhood Indicators Alliance in order to do, uh, uh, landscape analysis so that we can figure out what a capacity-building plan looks like this year. We are also working closely with the business community. MONC did conduct information sessions with the membership of the Greater Baltimore Committee members. And heading into fiscal year '23, we're coordinating with the city's community and economic development agencies, uh, to discuss engagement with Baltimore's small, medium, and large businesses. The chair asked the last time about the Violence Prevention Task Force report. That is a report that is slated to be released, uh, in the fall of this year. Uh, we did reconvene that task force in fiscal year '22 and will be working to expand its membership this year. They're going to be the key coordinating body for resource coordination associated with the Coordinated Neighborhood Stabilization Response. We have implemented the Mayor's Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. That council was established. We hold regular meetings. There is, uh, a two-year operational plan in place, uh, for this work group. One of the, two of the questions asked by this body around the provision of data, um, is information that, uh, in February, ideally, we will be able to provide because we've laid the foundation for what we are calling the Public Safety Accountability Dashboard. And so making sure that we're working closely with partners to determine of the cases that were referred to the State's Attorney's Office, what got null-processed, what got prosecuted, what got bumped up to the federal level. Uh, we are also working to make sure that we are regularly convening, uh, local, state, and federal agencies around the board, and we have implemented, uh, working collaboratively with other public safety agencies and not competitively to secure di- dollars. One of the very first things that MONC did coming into this administration was to stand up a coordinated committee that includes the Health Department, Fire Department, BPD, MONC, and OEM for regular conversations around making sure that we can secure grant dollars together. This has already yielded results, uh, and allowed the Fire Department to get additional dollars that, uh, were not up for grabs for them, um, ahead of time. Um, and then we've got the strengthening our key partnerships here. We are partnering with so many city agencies. We are partnering with so many city agencies around the co-production of public safety. There are too many to name. Obviously, the Office of Neighborhoods is coordinating engagement walks. We are partnering with DHCD, BPD, DPW, DOT, and others on Neighborhood Policing Plan Pilot work. We are partnering with the White House. We are partnering with other local, state, and federal law enforcement partners here. And then the implementation of our Public Safety Advisory Commission happened very early on. MONC serves as the coordinating body for this, and they have been holding meetings since January of 2021. In fact, they delivered their first annual report back in November to this body and have requested a date to present their report to this body. We are working with them actively to fill vacancies that they have right now in coordination with the city council and with the mayor's office. And then last but not least here, around neighborhood policing plans. I talked about this briefly. We are still actively piloting neighborhood policing plans in two of our neighborhoods, specifically the Fayette Street Outreach, Penrose Neighborhood in the Western District and the Greater Baybrook Neighborhood in the Southern District, working with BPD, working with other city agencies. We've allocated $700,000 to the development and support of these neighborhood policing plans, and we're coordinating partners to do that work. And then this last pillar here, before we jump into the GPRS update, is our pillar around evaluation and accountability. There was a question that was asked when BPD was presenting about goals and KPIs. And just want to make sure that for public consumption, folks understand the difference. That when we think about evaluation, the goal is ultimately the outcome that we're looking to achieve, and the KPIs or the key performance indicators are the metrics that let us know whether or not we're doing what we're supposed to be doing to get to that goal. And so this pillar really is about not only identifying those KPIs, but making sure that we are evaluating ourselves against them, holding ourselves accountable, and allowing the public to hold us accountable. So in progress are the identification of the measures to ensure accountability. I mentioned the first-of-its-kind tracking tool. Our dashboard's going to bring together public safety indicators from partner agencies to make sure that we've got transparency and accountability here around our criminal justice system and its effectiveness. That dashboard's going to go live in the 2023 calendar year. With regard to GPRS stat, that is in progress. And we are on target, as committed to this body, to deliver GPRS stat this month. We are leading this in partnership with BPD, the Office of Performance Innovation, and our national technical advisors to create our first iteration of that stat system for the Group Violence Reduction Strategy, using the guidance from those national advisors to determine which KPIs ultimately are going to tell us whether or not we're going to hit our goal. The GPRS stat process is going to assess our progress toward our violence reduction goals. And our stakeholders are going to be able to review that in ways that tell us both from a qualitative and a quantitative perspective whether or not we should be making changes operationally. I talked about IPV stat earlier. That is also in progress. And then Neighborhood Stat. This is pending implementation. We're working in partnership with the mayor's office, the Office of Performance and Innovation, and DCHD to develop a neighborhood-focused stading tool. This tool is going to be used as a baseline for change that's going to help the city measure and understand the impact of its strategic efforts to increase public safety at a neighborhood level. The first iteration of Neighborhood Stat is also expected this year. And then community perception of safety and trust. This is in progress. We're partnering, again, as I mentioned before, with Benya around this. They're going to be capturing data at a neighborhood level, and we're going to make sure that we share that information back using Baltimore's open data portal so that there's transparency there. MONC is going to be hosting community town halls and listening sessions with the mayor. We saw those begin in fiscal year '22 with the mayor's cross-district events, and we're going to continue to host those coming into this fiscal year. Now, around police accountability. So pending implementation here is that MONC is going to be working in partnership with the mayor's office and BPD to deliver quarterly community updates to discuss the progress on the consent decree. This is currently something that BPD already does, but will bring in the city of Baltimore and the, I'm sorry, the mayor's office and MONC. Given that the consent decree is not just BPD's consent decree, both the city and BPD are parties to this decree. And then I want to lift up a few updates from BPD on the improvement of internal affairs training for sworn officers to foster accountability within the agency. BPD established formal mechanisms around specialized training for internal affairs that's in alignment with the consent decree. They also implemented EPIC. We hear the police commissioner talk about this often. It's a peer intervention program designed to empower officers in the moment to serve as a first-line defense in preventing misconduct and ensuring officer wellness. And then BPD's been working to implement their peer interventions in the department's culture in efforts to prevent misconduct even before it happens. And I just want to give them accolades and kudos here for a job well done on this. And then last, around policy and research, this is in progress. Mentioned before that we have built a case management system. It's the first-of-its-kind. This agency has never had a case management system before that's going to allow us to provide a high level of detailed reporting around the impact of the work that we're going to be doing in partnership with so many other agencies and community members around gun violence reduction. The Equity Task Force to Improve Outcomes for Residents. This is pending implementation, and it is something that's owned by the city's chief equity officer. So she's been charged in the Community Violence Prevention Plan, sorry, the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, with creating a task force on structural racism and the policies and practices around it that span law enforcement, housing, education, that pay attention to the conditions that increase our community's risk for violence. So we have had initial conversations, and these will continue into fiscal year '23 as we build out this task force. So I'm going to shift now from the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan update to the Group Violence Reduction Strategy and where we stand in our pilot implementation. At a high level, GPRS is progressing well. I will echo the words that you heard my partner say across the way. We are cautiously optimistic. We are on schedule and actively working towards scale in the Western District in terms of a timeline in the third quarter of 2022. It's going to be scaled completely up in the Western District. We have just finished what we call Cycle Two and are in our third cycle, which will be the last cycle as we work through this proof of concept. In the fourth quarter of 2022, we will be using an updated problem analysis that not only takes what we've learned in the Western, but evaluates what we're seeing across the city to demonstrate proof of concept and make a decision on what district it makes sense to scale to next. And then by the first quarter of 2023 calendar year, will be expanded into another police district. All right. So if we look at what we see right now with regard to statistics here, what we're seeing is, and it's worth noting that these numbers are through 6/27 because we expected that we were going to present to the board, or I'm sorry, present to this body on 6/29. I do have a couple of updated numbers, though. So through 6/27, in the Western, 40% reduction in homicides year-over-year, 29% reduction in non-fatal shootings, a 9% reduction in Part I crime year-over-year. And through 7/6, pretty, pretty flat. Down 37% in homicides, down 25% in non-fatal shootings, down 8% in Part I crime. So again, cautiously optimistic about the impact that the strategy's having, and we're working to make sure that we maintain integrity in the strategy so that we can see the outcomes replicated and sustained as we scale into other districts. Next slide. So this is about the people. We've engaged at least 130 folks with this strategy, delivering 23 custom notifications. We've made 29 service partner referrals. Those are broken down up there by service provider. Forty-nine folks have been charged as a result of this strategy, demonstrating that balanced approach of law enforcement and opportunity for exiting a group. Approximately 60 people are under investigation right now as a part of the strategy. And I just want to note here, where you see approximations, we don't have firm numbers because we don't always know exactly what the number of group, what the number of individuals are in a group until the intel continues to come in and tells us whether or not we've got folks who were a part of the group that we didn't initially know about. Next slide. Through 6/27, we facilitated four emergency relocations, with one additional relocation being in progress. We provided five individuals with financial incentives totaling about $1,200. As a reminder, these incentives weren't in place last quarter. We put them in place this quarter or this cycle. And we've seen two law enforcement takedowns happen connected to GPRS. I mentioned in our last hearing that our local and national technical advisors come together with us on a quarterly basis physically and give us an update on what they're seeing, what they're observing, and how we're managing the strategy. They continue to do that, are continuously in contact with us on a weekly basis. They've engaged in a number of site visits since 2020, and they were here last from June 7 through June 9. And we were well into Cycle Two when that came through. The main objectives of that trip that time was to assist us in restructuring our governance associated with the strategy, to make sure that it translated into more effective implementation, especially as we begin to have conversations about scaling into another district. They were here to partner with us on building a foundation for that ongoing strategy for performance management. That's the nod to GPRS stat that I made earlier. And our refreshment of the Western District Problem Analysis results to make sure that we've got as up-to-date information as possible as we really step into scale of this, this strategy in this last cycle. So as we're looking to scale into additional police districts, I want to discuss the scope for scale with the committee so that you know what our team's working on right now. We have integrated regular performance management into our strategy governance. We are refining the implementation in the Western District in this third cycle. We're planning a phased expansion of the shooting reviews and the analytical work into other districts to prepare them for what's coming. And we're moving to expand into another district by 2023. So just as I wrap up here, this morning, I think I mentioned early on in my presentation, we did release our annual report on the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan. That includes all the work that I've talked about to a much greater extent, and it can be found on MONC's website. Year two for us is what we are classifying as the framing year. And what that means is that we're going to be scaling up GPRS and sidestep our pre-arrest youth diversion program into additional police districts. We're going to be fostering our CVI ecosystem to make sure that our hospital-based partners are on board. Those contracts have already gone out the door for fiscal year '23. School-based interventions, life coaching, victim services providers. We're going to be rolling out our reentry initiatives for returning citizens. I know that that was a question during the budget hearing from Councilwoman Middleton. And we're going to be expanding our victim services to make sure that we include survivors of gun violence, their families, and their neighbors. So this completes my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Director Jackson. We will open the floor to questions, and I'll start with two of my own. The first is, through the first six months of implementation of the pilot program for GPRS in the Western District, what is the data showing us about the effectiveness of the program?
I'm going to start here, and then I'm going to turn it over to our technical advisor, who is with me intentionally today to make sure that any questions of a technical nature get the attention that the committee deserves. So as I alluded to in the slides, what we are learning about the effectiveness of this strategy is obvious in the reductions that we're seeing in the Western District, down relatively 40% in homicides, down about 25% in non-fatal shootings, down 8% in total Part I crime. We are also seeing that there are folks who are taking the opportunity to walk away from the path that they were on and make decisions associated with having a better, improved outcome for their lives and for the lives of their families. In fact, of the 23 folks that I mentioned before, I want to be really clear in saying that these 23 individuals are folks who were at the highest risk of being shot or being a shooter. And so these are 23 folks who may have been involved in either a homicide or a non-fatal shooting, who have opted to take advantage of these services. We are also learning, from an operational perspective, what the, the team structure has to be in place with regard to the inter-agency coordination necessary to do this work. Because this is not just MONC and BPD and the state's attorney's office. This is also parole and probation. This is DJS. This is DPS, or DPSDS. These are our federal law enforcement partners. All of these folks are in the room together every week, multiple times a week, to make sure that we're doing this work effectively. And the last thing that I'll say before I turn it over to Jeremy is this work would not be successful if we did not have our community-based partners at the table and our residents, who are very much a part of the community moral voice, the messaging that we're using to drive change in individuals. And that being coupled with the real law enforcement actions that are happening are demonstrating that you've got two options, and you need to choose wisely. Jeremy, what would you add here about what we've learned to date?
Okay, thank you. I would just add just that in terms of the numbers, in terms of being able to determine the effectiveness of the strategy, we've seen a steady downward decline or reduction in homicides and non-fatal shootings in the Western District since April. So that has been extremely promising. It doesn't point definitively to the strategy, but I would also like to add that the technical assistance team is doing an external evaluation, a mixed-method evaluation, including a rigorous impact evaluation to really be able to isolate the effects of the strategy and say definitively with, with no, with no ambiguity that it is the strategy that's responsible and the strategy alone for those results.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The, I guess, related question is with regards to GPRS stat. Have we started that yet?
So GPRS stat is something that we committed would be available to the council in July, and we are on target for a July deliverable, as I mentioned during the presentation. I, I would offer that as BPD, OPI, and MONC think through what stats have looked like traditionally and what stats need to look like as we think through statistical inference and the work associated with not just looking at the data, but using the data to determine what deployment strategies need to look like, not just for BPD, but also for CVI work and GPRS work. Our stats will not look like meetings, right? So the GPRS stat is not- So the GPRS stat is not another meeting on top of police stat, on top of another meeting of IPV stat. It is very intentionally going to be an integrated statistical analysis tool. That is something that we'll be able to use to have even more focused conversations around the effectiveness of the city's strategy overall. But yes, we are, and yes, we are on target for a July deliverable.
So just to help wrap my head around, what, and forgive me for not, what does it mean when we have a GPRS stat if not based around a meeting? What does that look like?
I'm sorry, can you ask the question again?
What does it mean to have a GPRS, GPRS stat if there is no meeting to base it around? How do we envision using data and metrics to drive, like, what does that look like?
So I'm not suggesting that there would not be a meeting in which GPRS would be discussed, and the statistics that come out of GPRS, those key performance indicators and the goals, I'm suggesting that it's not a separate meeting.
I see.
So there's currently a police stat, there's currently a clean stat, you spoke to being a part of gun stat and city stat, and so how do we really think through the lens of a logic model that really gets us to the outcomes, the impacts, the results that we want to have, in ways that are driven by the statistical data and the analysis that we're doing? So I'm not suggesting that GPRS stat would not be a part of the conversation that we're having in meetings, I'm suggesting that we would not be adding another meeting onto BPD's and MONC's schedule to do that.
And then with regard to the data being captured, what metrics are being established to help us understand how well we're doing accomplishing, excuse me, accomplishing our goals and reaching the outcomes that we like to see for the model?
Thank you for that question, sir. So what we're going to be rolling out for GPRS stat in its first iteration is what I'll classify as minimally viable product, because we want to make sure that we're taking the advice from our technical advisors around what we should be capturing, with the full understanding that the council, the public, the mayor, may want even more statistical information and analysis to get us there. Actually trying to, bear with me for one moment, please, I have too many pages in my binder. And so obviously, the objective of a 15% reduction in homicides and non-fatal shootings in the Western District is our target, as it is across the entire city, given the mayor's charge. But as we think about GPRS that piloting in the Western, you hear me saying "Western District" for the purpose of that focus. And so some of the key performance indicators that we would be tracking toward that goal are the number of homicides year-over-year, the number of non-fatal shootings year-over-year, and tracking those on a weekly basis. The number of referrals that we would be making for group-involved individuals, whether or not, whether or not those group-involved individuals have accepted those services. What do recidivism rates look like for individuals who've accepted these services? What law enforcement actions have been taken as it relates to this work? Are they translating, are the custom notifications that we're doing translating into life coaching referrals? So those are just to name a few of the key performance indicators that we would be tracking to determine the success of the strategy, at least out of the gate.
And that would, of course, be captured month by month, or however often we're going to attach it to police stat?
Monthly.
Monthly, good. And then I just kind of want to, if we could go to Slide 17, please, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what I'm seeing here. No, not that one, this one, yes. So we see the very first stat here is overall number engaged by strategy. We have a rough number in there. Can you tell me about what this means to be engaged by the strategy? We have between 130, 140 individuals. What does that mean?
Absolutely. I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to Terrence Nash, who is the Deputy Director for the Group Violence Reduction Strategy. Engaged by the strategy means you're engaged either because there is law enforcement action that is going to be taking place, that you're going to be a part of, some sort of custom notification is coming your way because you've been identified as someone who is at high risk of being a shooter or being shot, and/or some combination of those two things. Terrence, you want to elaborate a bit more, and also kind of explain again why we've got the range of numbers?
Sure. So if you look at the 130 to 140 individuals, it's merely a total of all of the numbers below. So the reason there's a range, once again, is because some of this is an active investigation, an active investigations, and of course, until the investigation is done, you don't know how many people are involved. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you. I will come back to these questions, and Councilwoman Ramos, I hand the floor to you for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes. You mentioned the expansion of the 911 diversion for smart policing, but also for the purposes that we've all talked about. We have worked hard to get some additional funding to BCI, to be able to handle some of those cases. You had mentioned another organization that you're working with. Can you expand a little bit more about the, the 911 diversion, the types of calls that are going to be diverted, because we're adding four more, and whether or not with the funding that we've got, the initial funding that we were able to get for BCI will be able to really meet the need. I'm worried that, you know, there's a lot on their plate, and I want them to succeed. I've had great experience with them in my district, so I'm just trying to get a more full picture, if you will.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So first, I'll start by saying that the work that BCI and Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore is doing is a part of the mayor's 911 diversion work. It is not work that sits in MONC. It is work that sits with that community-based organization and that quasi-agency, and runs out of another lane in the administration. So I'm happy to provide additional information if my answer doesn't satisfy your question, ma'am. So with regard to the work that MONC is doing, our charge is to identify at least four additional call types that are non-behavioral, health-related. And that's what differentiates, that's what differentiates our work from the work that's currently going on in that space, where we could potentially introduce either a co-responder or a community-based responder model, and wouldn't need to necessarily deploy emergency, fire, police, other EMS resources. And so that is the investigatory work that we are undertaking this fiscal year. The Fuse Fellow that I mentioned is, is coming onboard as a part of the work that MONC's been charged with in order for us to complete that discovery and investigatory work.
So, thank you for that clarity, that helped a lot. So just as a follow-up, if the, so MONC is going to be identifying four other types that can be diverted, and that's part of the smart policing work, or that's separate from?
That is separate. And so as I mentioned before, the 911 diversion work is multifaceted. There is work that is happening out of the city administrator's office with regard to deploying services to our hospitals. The work that you heard me reference with regard to BPD's smart policing program is what we heard the police commissioner and the mayor announce a few weeks back around online and telephonic reporting for non-emergencies, so that we can free up their resources to respond to items that are deemed as police response necessary, but is, and while is a part of the umbrella of the 911 diversion work, is a part of that umbrella in ways that are differentiated from what MONC is doing, which is specifically the identification of call types that come into 911 right now, that don't necessarily need to be responded to by that personnel. The online and the telephonic reporting already exists and is available for utilization right now, and I believe that the chief or the police commissioner could speak into more detail about what gets routed to those.
Yeah, we've had deep conversations about that.
Well, we do, we do consider all of it a part of the burden reduction work required to make sure that we're responding to emergencies when emergencies are happening, and employing a community-based approach where appropriate to other response types.
So with these lanes, if you will, around the 911 diversion, hopefully there is some coordination, so we're not kind of stepping on each other or missing anything.
The coordination happens at the public safety pillar level within the mayor's administration, yes.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that, really appreciate it, and I appreciate the work. I think that's super important. Yeah, we've talked a lot about the smart policing, so we don't need to get into any additional detail. Separate question. In the beginning of this work, we talked a lot about the neighborhood profiles and the work that needs to be done, that you're doing in those certain areas in Western District, that we're also asking agencies, other agencies to participate in. I'm going to focus my questioning around the housing work. Not surprising, I guess. So the, how is that going? Are we seeing that, you know, what, again, my big tenet is, if we're addressing housing needs and getting rid of vacant properties, either through rehab or demolition, we will reduce crime. So tell me a little bit about how that's going, and then how, if we're going to be doing this, and I could be mixing up different things, because there's a lot of information here. If we're going to be going into another part of Western District, does that also follow, or we're just going to stick with the neighborhood policing strategy with the housing piece in one area?
So before I answer your question, want to ask a clarifying one. Just, so the second half of your question is kind of what I need clarity around. When you say, if we're going to be moving into another district, are you referencing the Group Violence Reduction Strategy?
Yes.
So I would offer that those two things, while the entire body of work that we are doing is integrated, those two pieces are not dependent upon each other. And so as we talk about scaling up to another district for the Group Violence Reduction Strategy, we're talking about another BPD district. When we talk about the neighborhood policing plans, those are happening at the neighborhood level.
But we are not scaling up on those quite yet.
We actually do plan on scaling up on the neighborhood policing plan work after this year's work is done and an evaluation's been completed. To your, the first half of your question around what's happening on the housing front, a few things have happened and are happening. The Department of Housing and Community Development has partnered with MONC and with DPW, DOT, with BSIT, with Parks and Recs, and with these community-based organizations at, in these two neighborhoods, to identify together the areas in which we see blight and criminal activity intersect. And so for one neighborhood, they have identified three areas that are the areas of focus, and those focuses also include the SEP Ted-related work. And for another neighborhood, they've identified one area. This is in Councilwoman Porter's district, and is pretty close to where she's asking us to do some, some research on here. And so the work that's happening now is the identification of those properties, the ownership of those properties, and next steps around what either receivership, demolition, cleaning, greening looks like for those spaces in partnership with the other agencies involved in the neighborhood policing plan pilots.
So they're just identifying the, you know, the status of each property and going through, because it's literally an inventory of what the properties are, and then going into what the strategy is for each one?
Correct. And in fact, we've already done a walking tour down in Brooklyn with GBA to physically point out and identify all of the issues associated with the strip of neighborhood that they have identified, so that we could complete the environmental scan associated with that work, and DCHD is undertaking next steps now.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Costello? Thank you. I'll jump back into some of my questions. So a central method of communication with the GPRS model is, are the call-ins, we've talked about this before, or those face-to-face meetings between group members and the strategy's partners. Since you've launched GPRS, how many group members have you reached, and how many more targets do you have, do you have to get in contact with?
So it depends on what you mean by "reached." Before you, you have the total number of people that we've had contact with. If you mean direct communications, including custom notifications, we've had, to date, there have been 24 custom notifications. These numbers are a little old. So custom notification, you're familiar, are you familiar with custom notifications?
I am, but you should explain it for the committee.
So there are two types of, of direct communication. One is the call-in, which we've seen, I even took part of it. Generally, the way it looked in this city is, you invite people into an area, and then you stand on stage and you yell at them, or, and you offer them services. So what we've decided to do is, we're doing custom notifications where we, after we've identified the candidates for a custom notification out of the people that are most likely to shoot someone or be shot themselves, is we design a very tailored message, delivering with community moral voice, service providers, law enforcement, a message of hope, services, a way out, but also responsibility. In other words, we want to do everything we can to help you. This is dangerous, we have services, we'll provide you anything we can to find another way for you. You don't have to take those services, but you have to stop the violence. And if you don't, you'll be held accountable. And so that's the custom notification, very direct, it's to an individual. We do, we have a program for it. We're doing custom notifications behind the walls, we do it with parole and probation, and we utilize our community moral voices to find out where we can find people, and deliver it, you know, at their homes, wherever we can find individuals.
Thank you. And sort of curious, and I think this will help me better understand, I think, this slide. When we think about the sort of entry point into GPRS, GPRS meaning Group Violence Reduction Strategy, the idea initially starts with the group. We were initially thinking about violent groups and the people within that group. Part of the question was, how many other people we intend to get in contact with? Do we know what that sort of denominator is?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Do we know what the denominator is? Being that we've, we've done custom notifications for 23 individuals, how many have we identified as the subset that we want to get in contact with and offer them that resource? And they are the high priority. Is that, you know, 25 people, or is it 100 people?
So, and I can let Jeremy speak to it, the difference between the model of going after everybody in the group as opposed to making contact with the most meaningful people in the group?
Yeah, that's a, it's a very good question. What I would say to that is that as a rule of thumb, we generally try to, so this, you're right, this is all about groups. The problem analysis that we presented on last year shows that 70% of the homicide incidents and shooting incidents in the Western District have a group dynamic. What we try to do is that for every group member-involved incident, as a rule of thumb, we want to accomplish essentially, on average, one to three custom notifications. So in the shooting reviews, we're identifying those at the highest risk of involvement in gun violence. In the direct communication work, whether it be via custom notification or call-in, we're communicating at a scale that can actually help us see community-level reductions, so that the message of the strategy, the deterrence message, but also that moral message and message of help, could reach a critical mass of people. So generally, rule of thumb, one to three per group member. So generally, rule of thumb, one to three per group member-involved incident.
And so just want to reiterate here, because this was a question that you asked in the budget hearing and even in the hearing last quarter, that there isn't a target number, if you will, across the 735 or so individuals that we identified during the problem analysis as being group-involved, that this is driven by the activity, the violence, right, and wanting to make sure that we're making one to three contacts every single time a homicide or a non-fatal shooting happens.
And just to build on that, the reason why we want to reach out and speak with people for group member-involved incidents is because retaliation dynamics tell us that these are the incidents that could result in the next shooting. So there, we're intervening and interrupting.
Yeah, I think to that point, I'm curious about the one to three, why just one to three? And then I guess that would, well, I guess you can't do easy math here, because it's one to three, but for the number of shootings that we've had in the Western District, what percentage of those are group-involved by way of our network analysis? Like, I think we can, we can get really into the ETR. I'll try not to, but I...
Yeah, so I'll ask, answer the beginning part of the question, and then, or the second part of the question, and turn the beginning over to Jeremy. Your point is a valid one around what percentage of these shootings, whether homicides or non-fadals, are group-involved and which ones are not. Sometimes we have a domestic homicide that has absolutely nothing to do with an individual who was group-involved. And so in the work that the technical advisors are doing with BPD, other law enforcement partners, and MONC, in our shooting reviews, is assessing whether or not these are group-involved incidences or not. And as we continue to process those, and we complete the finalized or updated problem analysis that we'll be sharing with this body in quarter three, we'll have a better readout of what the, what the ratio is that we're seeing that are, or were, group-involved at that point and were not.
We're seeing that basically the results of the problem analysis hold. It continues to be roughly 70% of the shooting incidents with group involvement, so that has been a pretty stable outcome or stable conclusion. I, you know, in terms of why one to three, it's mostly because it's a question of identifying the right people, so identifying people who are best situated to not only prevent the next shooting, but also people that can in turn communicate that message. So people that are highly networked, that have a lot of different connections with others. Communicating to everyone in a group would be, I think, an ideal outcome, but unfortunately, to actually do that in practice is never really feasible or practical.
That, that, oh, please, go ahead.
I think to kind of answer your question, so there've been, was of Saturday, there were 61 homicides and non-fatal shootings, so 70% of that.
Right.
And realize that we just started in January, but it's, in the past 90 days, we've been reaching our goal of one to three.
I see. So just to sort of understand the flow of how these things go, there is a shooting, a group-involved shooting, 70% of the time. In that case, we then look at that group and identify the highest priority, highest network, highest sort of, most powerful people within that group, most influential people within that group, and it's usually between one and three people, to then do a custom notification for. Is that fair to say?
No, not necessarily, sir. I would offer that during the shooting reviews, without divulging too much information, and also passing over to my law enforcement partners here, to the extent that they want to add on, is that the shooting reviews is not, the shooting reviews are not just about identifying the high-ranking individuals in a group. It is about identifying, just like any other homicide or non-fatal shooting in the city, who folks' known associates are, whether or not they've got group membership involvement, who we believe is at the highest risk of actually retaliating or being the next victim. That doesn't necessarily correspond to who's the ranking person, right? An example that I shared in last quarter's deck was a shooting that, or homicide that happened in cycle one, where we know that someone's relative was murdered, and that person's relative was the one that we needed to have a conversation with right away, because they were more likely to retaliate. That doesn't necessarily correlate to where he's situated in the group. Anything to add there, ma'am?
And I'll just add, a good question. So you're looking at the total sum of the person in their organizational chart and their connection to other people. The strategy is people-based, and that we use the concept of groups, the groups may not be in the traditional structure of who's in the enterprise together of criminality. It could be people associated...
Friends.
...in that way, especially if we get intelligence that there's likelihood of retaliation. That is often occurring through people of that social network closest to the victim, which may not be synonymous with the group in the traditional sense. That's why we're taking a total-sum look at the victims of violence and an evaluation of that individual and connections to groups, if that helps you in a way.
It begins to, yes. I, I think, and I'll, I'll ask this question and go to my colleagues, just, I don't want to hijack the whole meeting on this, but I do want to dig into it. And, and making sure that we are going to enough people, that was my, my initial concern, one that I dug into during the budget hearings. I think we've had a number of conversations, even in this, in this committee about this. Are we reaching out to enough people? I see now we have done 23 custom notifications. So first, the question is, are we reaching out to enough people? And then are we reaching out to the people, for the folks that we do connect with, are they hearing from all the right people? And so as we know for the call-in model, for its strong suits and weaknesses, one of the strong suits was that you had the mayor in the room, state attorneys in the room, you had the U.S. attorney in the room, you had a mother of someone who has either been arrested or killed. I know, and we asked this before, I don't know if we break out the data in this way, but I do think it is very helpful. Do we know that breakdown for the 23?
So yes, we know what type of custom notification that we're, or what type of direct communication we're giving, whether it's a call-in or a custom notification. We know whether or not that's a law enforcement-only, or whether or not it's something that we've partnered with our community-based partners to deliver, so that it is what we know to be the traditional call-in, where you've got law enforcement, the service provider, and a partner, a close associate who would be considered a credible messenger here. With regard to the 23, I want to reiterate a point that we've made before. Have we reached enough people? So the 23 custom notifications delivered make up a part of the 130 to 140 individuals. What we can't let slip through the cracks here is that there's also a law enforcement approach associated with this. And so there are folks being charged and going to jail as a part of this strategy. These 23 folks at the time of this report, who were delivered custom notifications, were the folks at that time deemed to be at the highest risk of being shot or being a shooter. And so when you ask, are we reaching the right people, I would offer that this is potentially 23 lives that we've saved. And so, yes, we're reaching the right people, and we're not just reaching these people. We're also having conversations with their family members. We're having conversations with whomever we know to be their influencers, and so that message is getting out more broadly.
And so I would add that, so since we've been doing the best 90 days about the contacts we've been doing, I think that the work, and the TAs are going to tell us that the work is showing us that we're getting the right people, but if we look at it, once again, we're optimistic, given the trend, that we are hitting the right people. And also, these are people, so we're tracking them and the groups that they're associated with to see the associated violence. And right now, it looks like that we are being successful, both in the gross numbers and tracking the individuals in the groups and seeing the reduction in violence within those groups.
Okay, I will open the floor to Councilwoman Ramos. I'll keep going then. Thank you. The, the other considerations that are looking at this subset of data, actually, and I'll make this a request, I think it would be helpful, could, can we break that down, just going forward and have it tell month by month, folks who've been custom notified by the police department, by so-and-so forth? I think that would be helpful, just to see that breakdown. Also, with regard to service partner referrals, so I, there are 29 service partner referrals. Can you explain to me what that means? 26 were engaged by services, so I guess by any of the services, someone could be theoretically multiple. If you could just explain to me how that breakdown shakes out, that'd be helpful.
Yes, so the 29 service partner referrals make up the total number of referrals that we made, either to ROKA and/or YAP.
Okay.
So there are some family dynamics here. There are cases where we have parents and their children who are a part of this strategy, and so there's some level of cross-pollination happening to make sure that the service provision accounts for the entire family unit. A good example of that is one of the, the folks that we provide at relocation services for has two children that's, that are also a part of the strategy. And so when we talk about engaged by ROKA, and that being 16 individuals, and engaged by YAP, that being 10, there are often some times when we see interplay. And a service partner referral doesn't always translate into folks accepting those services, which is why you see the delta of three.
Got it. Okay, I realize we are past our time. I want to thank you guys for walking us through the update. I do have a lot, many more questions I'd love to discuss with you, and...
And we are working to schedule time for a meeting with you, sir, and the technical advisors, along with myself.
Okay. Thank you. With that, the committee will go into recess, and I will see you guys soon. Thank you.